Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for the town of Smithfield this Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Would you all please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on our agenda tonight is Community Development and Planning Director's Report. Director Clary, please.
Yes, thank you. We just wanted to clarify the three tabs on the computer. The first tab is the consolidated agenda. The second tab would be the original Grange application. And then the third tab is the 655 West Main Street staff report and attachments. Thank you.
Thank you.
The three items that the planning commissioners have open are their consolidated agenda, the original Grange submission application, and the application and staff report for 655 West Main Street. Thank you.
Okay. Item number two on our agenda tonight is upcoming meetings and activities for Tuesday, November 21st, Board of Historic and Architectural Review Meeting. Also that Tuesday canceled is the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. On Monday, the 27th, 3:00 PM, you have Town Council Committee Meetings. December 5th, 6:30 PM, Town Council Meeting. And if warranted, December 12th, again at 6:30 PM here, the Planning Commission Meeting. Item number three on our agenda. Public comments. The public is invited to speak to the Planning Commission on any matters except scheduled public hearings, which we have about four, one, two, we have four tonight. I count four. You can speak on any matter except scheduled public hearings. Please use the sign-up sheet, which I see a few of you have done. Comments are limited to five minutes per person, and a required response from the town will be provided in writing following the meeting. This is for public comments. First person to sign up is Mr. Bill Harris. I know you've been here many times before, but for the record, please state your name and address.
Okey-dokey. My name is Bill Harris. I live at 329 Grace Street down in the historic district of Smithfield. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight, like so many others, to join the chorus of voices that is being raised in opposition to the renewed requests being made by Mr. Luder and his development team for a series of waivers of zoning regulations regarding a proposed development known as the Grange on the old Pierceville property. Like many others, I was cautiously optimistic when I heard that Mr. Luder was going to resubmit his application and would include in that resubmission a plan to reduce the number of residential units at the Grange to forego the waiving, the waiver of the height restriction and to provide adjusted plans designed to reduce and mitigate the traffic concerns that will come as a result of the development of the Grange. However, like most, I'm very disappointed to learn that each of the proposed adjustments fall very short of addressing the significant problems that the Grange development will create for the town of Smithfield. A reduction in residential units from 304 to 267 is a reduction so small has to have virtually no impact on the density within the Grange development itself. And while a reduction in vehicular traffic generated by the Grange will drop from 5,400 trips per day to 4,700 trips per day, and that is a significant reduction, please take note that the 4,700 projected trips per day is still far too many for the neighborhood streets within the historic district to absorb. Once again, the developer has made it crystal clear that he and his team are not interested in significant change in the original plan, and they continue to argue that, as proposed, the Grange is neither too dense nor the traffic it will produce too much. The oft-discussed impact on emergency services, on water and electric services, on our ability to staff and properly fund our public schools, all of which will be negatively impacted by the development of the Grange, very little discussion of that anywhere. And at this point, they all must be considered in their totality. Looking at the particular request of Luder's proposal, as a standalone project is no longer something that can be considered. It is important for Planning Commission to look at the big picture and begin to create a master plan for controlled development, as well as for the increased traffic issue that will come with that development. Specifically tonight, I urge you to reject the special use permit request for a waiver to reduce the setback and side back requirements in the residential areas. By doing so, you will force the developer to go back to the drawing board and restructure setback requests so that the overall project will have a significantly reduced number of residences, which will significantly reduce the number of cars, which will consequently reduce the amount of traffic. I urge you to require the developer to reexamine the traffic pattern for entrance and exit out of the Grange development. It seems well past time that the Planning Commission and representatives of the development team, together with representatives from the Virginia Department of Transportation, actually sit down together and take a look at a plan that not only serves the Grange but also protects the residential streets of the historic district. This, by the way, is one of the first priorities listed in our town's comprehensive plan in regards to restrictions on development. The absence of significant proffer by the development team in regards to costs associated with creating a proper traffic flow seems totally indefensible at this point, especially given the fact that both the Mallory Farm developer and the developers of Sawgrass have already met with and planned with the Virginia Department of Transportation and also have provided proffers that will cover the expense of any adjustments to the physical traffic patterns associated with these developments. It is time for the Planning Commission to direct the Luder team to do the same. It is up to the Planning Commission to protect the historic district-
One minute.
...and the atmosphere that makes Smithfield special. People don't come here to drive around Cypress Point. They don't come here to drive around Moonfield. They come to spend time in the historic district, Main Street, Grace Street, Cary, James, and the area downtown. Please take your time. Do not rush to approve tonight. Re-investigate, have meetings, do the job, and do it right for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, one moment. I've done this before. I'm not going to do it all night. You do agree that it is a piece of property there that's on one of our main entrance corridors that nothing is being done with. What would you propose to put there? You yourself, what would you propose to put there?
Absolutely. Great question. I've made suggestions from the very first proposal back two years ago when it was first unveiled at the Smithfield Center. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had all of the buildings that faced Main Street in the same architectural style that they are today, all commercials? A nice hotel raised up overlooking a large, open green area with the rental cabins down one side. There may be a series of artisan cabins where they actually work and sell. They draw things that were done in Smithfield. It would be great to have that big green area used for a skating rink during the cold weathers. Early on, a lot of people suggested the back area be used for common space, for common gardens. I'd like to see the homes done in clusters rather than streets packed on each other. And wouldn't it be nice if we had north-south two boulevards? One that goes north and one that goes south to connect all the traffic across patterns? No parking on the streets, parking swept around the back. They want to replicate downtown, and they should do it in that fashion. So yes, sir, we've given a lot of consideration to which should be there. It's been unfairly tagged on a lot of us in here that we're anti-development. That is absolutely not the case. We are for good, productive development that will benefit the town but also protect the downtown portion. Thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, sir. Second person on the list tonight. This is, have themes, Akori.
Good evening. This is regarding the Windsor 005 Church Street.
No, sir.
No.
That comes later.
That comes later.
This is just com- you know, regular comments about anything.
I signed in. It was my first time.
Okay.
If anybody had signed in or not.
Okay, understood. Someone else is in your party? Okay. Okay, that's Alma?
I'm the one driving. Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Okay. Next up on our list is Ms. Mary Harris.
You can see, I anticipated you because I knew he wasn't going to speak. Sorry. Anyway, my name is Mary Harris. I live at 329 Grace Street. I am opposed to the Luder proposal for rezoning of the Grange with the proposal as it is presented. There is no unique character to this. It's something you would find in almost any state or area of Virginia. It does not have a public benefit. It is far too dense. It will add too much traffic to our streets in the downtown area and historic area. It will also add to the overcrowding of our schools, and it's going to impact and overtax our public utilities, like our fire department, our police department, and our EMTs. If you've been listening to the speakers over the past two years, the themes have been consistent. Preserve our history and make sure any development in and around Smithfield is smartly done with minimum disruption of the quality of our historic town. And incorporate and address the concerns of the citizens. We all know that development is coming. Tagging people who speak in hopes of improving what is being presented with the moniker "no development" is not accurate. I have talked about traffic concerns before. This new plan does not significantly address traffic concerns or patterns around the development. There are alternatives, if you are willing to do the work and look for them. Making residential streets in downtown Smithfield cut-through streets makes absolutely no sense. Even VDOT has a cut-through policy called Control of Residential Cut-Through Traffic. I brought it with me. It's easy to access. I'm happy to send it to you. Have you investigated that particular document? This should be done by you and the town council before you push any proposal on this property that allows cut-through access to residential streets. According to this policy, the definition of residential cut-through traffic is vehicular traffic passing through a residential area without stopping or without an origin or destination within the area on that street. Such traffic utilizes a local residential street rather than streets whose primary function is to accommodate through traffic. This certainly sounds like what is proposed for Grace Street, Cary Street, and James Street from this development. More work needs to be done here so that we do not have cut-through streets in Smithfield. Keep in mind that Grace Street, Cary Street, James Street are all identified as major access points to and from the Grange. They are also identified in the comprehensive plan as historic residential streets. There are other options. Let's consider not taking out the Grace Street curve. Let us, let's use that part of Grace as a right turn only from the development onto Main Street, which is a business, commercial mixed-use district. Another reasonable alternative might be to look at the area to the left of Hallwood Enterprises. Yes, I drove through this and looked at it. I know it's narrow. And put a roadway there from Grace Street to Main Street. This certainly could be done. Both of these options would send traffic to Main Street where it can enter the business district to the left and go to Route 10, where it is, which is a major traffic intersection and where major traffic belongs. However, the best alternative is to add a connector off of Route 10 to enter and leave this development. If a connector was placed up Mill Swamp Road behind or on the backside of this development, this could accommodate traffic for this development and the county's traffic coming down Mill Swamp Road and relieve the downtown streets of the majority of the traffic. Here is a drawing, I will leave it with you, of alternatives, how that kind of thing can be done. This was professionally done. I have permission to use it. It shows, I have two copies. It shows what it looks like today and two alternative-
One minute.
-points that you can look at as to how a connector would be done onto Route 10. If you want more copies, I can provide those. As our comprehensive plan states, we should protect Smithfield's stock of contributing historic buildings and prefer to serve the quality of our town life. How is making our downtown historical residential area and streets into cut-throughs achieving this goal? Simply put, it is not. My last comment is about the citizens in Smithfield and particularly in the historic area. As you know, we've been here 31-plus years, helping to restore the town and encourage preservation. This is a unique community that needs to be protected. No one is saying we need to be stagnant. We are saying, let's not destroy the uniqueness and quality of life. Pumping 4,700 cars onto downtown streets is wrong. A reduction in height of apartment building and a small density reduction isn't enough for this property to fit into this historic town. The traffic reduction isn't adequate and the access points not suitable. So I'd like to leave this. May I?
Please. Next sign-up is Mr. Richard Lignier. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Lignier, Sr., 101 Presswood. Chairman and Commissioner members, I have resided in Smithfield for 19 years now. This particular request is the, something that I believe should be concerned to each of us. I'm opposed to the Grange, to the new Grange plan. And how new it is, I really, you know, my main concern is an open BMP pond on Main Street across from Main Street Baptist Church and near the Schoolhouse Museum. This pond will, I believe, become a hazard and a nuisance to the surrounding community. Why put an open BMP pond in the historic area of Smithfield? This pond can be underground, covered, and used as a parking space. And for all of the activities that we have downtown, parking becomes a premium. I would ask thee, this commission, to consider, if you decide to approve in any way, please do not approve an open BMP pond on Main Street. It's not the character that I envisioned Smithfield to be. This is the best move we've ever made. I don't want to see Smithfield change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have the Mr. Bob Hines.
Bob Hines, 216 Washington. First thing I'd like to know from Mr. Luder's people is what is going on at James and Washington? What's going to happen there? I see they fixed the road. I think I understand they got a complete clay street, but I'd like to know what else the intentions are there. Now, we've been talking about population density, traffic density, traffic flow, lot size setbacks, overall appearance, multifamily development concerns, impact on schools, fire, police. But you know what? I'm not talking about Pierceville. I sat at y'all's discussion last time talking about what's going on at Turner Drive, and y'all had quite a long discussion with concerns about that. So why do you have those concerns out there but not here in town? I'd like somebody to answer that. I really don't get it. It doesn't make sense to me. Seems hypocritical. I thought there was to be some attempt at traffic remediation, what happened to that. An overpass, which I've mentioned before, such as at Cypress Creek, paid for by the developer, could be done. I've talked to VDOT personally, been to their office. They've said it could be done. It'd be expensive. They wouldn't deny it. They won't pay for it, but it could be done. So question I have for Mr. Luder's people is don't say it can't be done or you can't do it. Just say you won't do it. Let's be honest about it. That would relieve a lot of what's being talked about as far as traffic bottleneck congestion, which, by the way, the bottleneck is still there. There's somebody we just mentioned. And I suspect that the people that will be moving in there, the more it populates, the more they're not going to be happy about how they get in and out of there either. And the parking in there, from what we understand, it's sub-minimal to start with, and I've said this before. I think the Main Street Baptist parishioners are going to be at a great inconvenience when this thing gets going. As someone else said, you got a motel there? That's not going to be generalized parking. The motel, whoever runs that's not going to stand for the parking lot being filled up and people can't get in there to park in a reasonably close manner. They're not going to want to be parking two blocks away to walk to check into a motel. That's not going to happen. So the sum total of all developments and their impacts with the county needs to be considered, and Pierceville needs to be considered in that. You folks know that score better than most of us. But somehow, the Pierceville product just doesn't seem to collectively fit into the occasion with most of you. Few of you, yes. Most of you, no. It's just a "not in my backyard" thing. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Ellen Biebermeyer.
Good evening. Mary Ellen Biebermeyer, 355 Grace Street. So here we go again. I was excited when I heard that there were a new proposal for the Grange project. I wondered what new ideas were going to be put forth, what had changed. And then after I realized, after reading the proposal, that not much has changed at all. All the developer did was lop off a fourth floor of some of the apartment buildings and hotel. Big deal. That's insulting. We still have the same density problems, still the same traffic problems. We still have the back of a hotel facing Main Street. That's ugly. That's ugly. And we're still using millions of taxpayer dollars for one development. Is no one listening? Did we not just have an election where development was front and center of most of the debates? Most of the debates? We need to rethink this. But I have another question regarding the Grange. Why do they need so many entrances in and out of the development? When I look at other subdivisions in and around Smithfield, they each have one entrance. And I'll name a few, and I'm sure there's more. Cypress Creek, one entrance. Waterford Oaks, which is across from Kroger, one entrance. Smithfield Boulevard, and that has a couple different names, one entrance. Wellington Estates, one entrance. Gatling Point North, Gatling Point South, one entrance. Even Mallory Farm, which I've just seen the preliminary drawings of that, appears to only have one entrance as well, and to be determined, the promontory behind Tractor Supply and Sweetgrass, which is next to Sherwin-Williams, also appear to only have one entrance. Why are we dumping all these cars in and out onto downtown residential streets when no other subdivision does that? If it's because of the commercial aspect, which appears to be in the front of the development off of Main Street, then cars can easily enter and exit there. We still don't have the connector, the flyover, for cars going out to Mill Swamp Road, but that seems like a good time to do that here. For some reason, we are still treating this development differently than others have been treated. So I'm asking you to say no to this development as it currently stands. We need to do more work at it. I know the developer doesn't like that, but this is Smithfield. We get to decide what's best for Smithfield. The developer doesn't tell us what's good for Smithfield. Give us some new ideas, show some creativity, get rid of the farmer's market, and for goodness' sake, stop spending taxpayer money on commercial developments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Herb DeGraw.
Evening, Commission members. Didn't think I had a dog in this fight, but I decided since I drive by where the Grange is to be, I'd put a few comments to say.
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Herb DeGraw, 15401 Mills Swamp Road. Spent 13 years on the school board. In 2000, we had 4,976 students. We're just pushing 5,400 now. In 23 years, just a shade over 400. In fact, I think even Dr. Thornton, the recently retired superintendent, would say we've sort of stabilized. And when you think about it, the birth rate from 2010 to 2020 was an average of 1.2%. And we need 2.1% to maintain the workforce in this country. In the last three years, it was an average of 0.8%. And the last year of these last three was negligible. In fact, the population increase was mainly due to immigration. So I think we need to consider that 20- to 40-year-olds are not having that many children, are putting off having children, and for people to say it's going to cause the schools to be overcrowded are barking up the wrong tree. We heard this back during the 1980s to 1999 timeframe, and hey, there are a couple thousand housing building lots approved in this county to this day. But the folks who I think will probably locate in the Grange, they're going to be that young professional group that are interested in putting money in the bank, maybe going on to a different job someplace else after they go to work for Smithfield Foods or whoever else in the area, but it'll be somewhat of a bedroom community, I believe, just like northeastern Hollywood County has become over in the Carrollton area. So folks got to be careful about some of the projections they make. When I come in Mill Swamp Road, I go to the right and go to the intersection and go wherever I want to go. Rarely do I go through town unless I need to go downtown or on to South Church Street to conduct business. To say that this 10% reduction in traffic and/or in housing units is not significant, I really think it is significant. So think about this, study it, and I do recommend that you approve this because sooner or later, somebody's going to do something. Come 2040, good Lord willing, I'm out of here. I'll be 100. But I want to see the right thing done in this piece of property called Pierceville ever since Bannister, Tarleton, and those British D'Grooms came through here looking for bad rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. Ms. Leah Walker.
My name's Leah Walker. I live at 303 Redpoint Drive in Smithfield. I'm here to speak about the Grange development package before you this evening. In May, you asked minimal questions and you pressed for minimal improvements in the package that was before you. There is nothing about this development that can't be improved as it is presented to you tonight. The open space, the density, the traffic flow, the design, you have minimal detail in front of you regarding this project. There are no proffers regarding phasing. That means all of the housing could be developed first, and a commercial could either come later or never. Think Ben's Grant. There are no proffers specific to what the buildings, the renderings, the development will be constructed towards. The designation of planned mixed-use development gives all of the control to the development team, not just Joe Luder for, but to whomever he sells the property to. If you want sections to be commercial and sections to be residential, designate those as such. Allow the town to maintain control and partner with the developer as each phase is constructed, as you zone them to be. as you zone them to be, whether it's commercial, residential, or open space. This specific zoning will allow the town to actually achieve the vision of the renderings that have been presented to you. You have the ability to make this better, and as several other folks have said, we're not here before saying that nothing could be there. This development, this design, could be a great asset in that specific location, but you have to allow to have the development as you've seen it, as the renderings have been presented. You have to require the developer to put those into the proffers to include designating the zoning what you want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Renee Bevan, 101 Beale Avenue. I want to thank this developer and his team for their efforts in working towards an agreeable solution for this project. It's Planning Commission's responsibility to ensure that what is presented and approved is what gets built. That means if you want to see it come to fruition, it needs to be proffered. The proffers in this resubmission of the Grange are woefully inadequate. If it isn't in the proffer, it isn't going to happen. To rely on BHR for the architectural details is just ridiculous. It's clear from the peanut barn that the BHR's recommendations are not adhered to. There are many other promises made that are not proffered. Again, if you want it to happen, make it be in the proffer. Additionally, the updated letter from Ted Figueroa doesn't address the public-private partnership request. Please get clarification on that. Also, in the initial submission, the name phases did not correspond with the order of build. Are the name phases in this new submission going to correspond with the order of build? Most of the single-family homes are in Phase Three, but the verbiage implies that single-family homes are going to be built first. That's confusing. Please get clarification on that. Additionally, I find the proposal on page eight of the traffic study to rename Grace Street to Grange Street offensive to all and an insult to the residents of Grace Street. Please request clarification on that. In order for our Planning Commission to give this updated submission thorough consideration, these and other questions really need to be addressed during a work session and cannot be answered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bevan.
Elizabeth Brooks, 320 Grace Street. I'm also opposed to the Grange proposal as is because it has no unique character. It looks like any place, Virginia, or Seventeen. It is too dense, it has too much traffic, it adds to school overcrowding, and it will stretch over tax for public services as well. And we do not fully consider the historical significance of this site. I have talked about historical preservation before and would like to remind you of some key considerations. There are three expert historical organizations that have attempted to be heard by our town over several years about the Pierceville property, the side of the Grange. They are the Department of Historic Resources, Preservation Virginia, and our own Holloway County Museum. All of them have stated the importance of the Pierceville property to our national, state, and local history. A letter from Preservation Virginia that I am providing with you tonight was sent to Town Council by Sonia Ingram, and I'd like to read part of that letter into record. So, she states that Preservation Virginia has advocated for the preservation of Pierceville for a number of years, even though the Thomas Pierce House, a wonderful example of a rare 18th-century dwelling with a traditional eastern Virginia Dutch-style roof, very few of which still survive, was demolished. Records and maps have shown that the site itself was a large farm complex with many buildings and a cemetery. Records also indicate that enslaved people lived and worked on the property. The Virginia Department of Historic Resources records for Pierceville from the 1930s indicate that two of the standing buildings at the time of the property were slave dwellings. The record also indicates that a burial ground existed on the property, likely containing the burial of enslaved peoples. Undoubtedly, the history and legacy of the property is tied to the history of the enslaved people of Smithfield. Archaeology can provide information about this advantage or a little bit illiterate individuals, families, and communities that might otherwise remain invisible to the historical record. With a relatively high potential for slave-related archaeological deposits and burials, it is imperative that the Pierceville site undergo a comprehensive and archaeological investigation performed by professional archaeologists with the most up-to-date technologies before it is destroyed. And an example of the 18th-century, a suitable example of this is the 18th-century first Baptist church archaeological site, which was recovered in Williamsburg in 2021. As one of the nation's oldest black churches, the excavation is helping colonial Williamsburg, who for decades ignored the stories of colonial black Americans, reckon with its past storytelling about the century's origins and the role of black Americans. So, it says, "We highly encourage you to require that the site be fully investigated so we can more fully understand the history of Pierceville and Smithfield and its connections to other colonial sites in Virginia." Once this information is lost, it is lost forever. And so, my request today is that I hope you put a condition on this development to have a top-notch archaeological firm, like the James River Institute that worked on Bacon's Castle, perform the comprehensive study. And I would like you to take the time to read this letter and consider what is being said by all three expert key historical organizations: Department of Historic Records, Preservation Virginia, and the Holloway County Museum. This site holds a treasure trove of historical and archaeological information that we need to preserve now so that it is not lost forever like that beautiful home.
And last on that list tonight is Mr. Jeff Brooks.
Evening, folks. Jeff Brooks, 320 Grace Street. I'm not going to take a lot of your time. We've been through this rodeo several times, through Planning Commission, through Town Council. The only, and I didn't bring a script like all these great people did, I just wanted to have a free-form conversation with you and say that you folks were appointed, not elected, but appointed, and it's your due diligence to look through everything that's being presented. I don't like the timing of this new application. I think it's too quick. There's some obvious vacancies in Town Council that are going to be addressed, but it's up to you to do the right thing, to kick it back up to Town Council, and Council will then take it and run with it. You know, I live on Grace Street. I'm not a fan of the Grange process as it is. I am not anti-development. I'm not. But I think what we have in front of us is just a very slight variation of the original application, which everybody heard was pretty much against, with the exception of Smithfield Foods and Riverside Hospital. All right? I understand that. I get it. But what I'm asking you to do is be vested, do the right thing, know what you're voting about, and take it from there. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. That was the last person to sign up. If there's anyone who wished to speak now that didn't, you may come up now. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Julie Fapsick-Swarz, 17552 Morgard Beach Road, Smithfield. My husband and I are relatively new to this community. We moved here about a little over two years ago. And I want to tell you, when we moved here, we decided we could move anywhere in the country, and we fell in love with Hampton Roads. We were going to go to Virginia Beach. And we got to Virginia Beach and saw the crowds and the traffic and the commercialism, and said, "Oh, my God, this is not for us." And a realtor found a house here, and we drove into Smithfield, and it was one of the most beautiful communities I'd ever seen. The historic downtown, those Victorian homes, the just lovely community that is Smithfield. And maybe if you've grown up here, or lived here all your life, or lived here a long time, maybe you stopped seeing it, but we just fell in love with this wonderful community. We tend to be here till the day we die. It's so wonderful. And when we heard about this Grange, and the more we looked into it, I don't have all the information that these wonderful people have, but what I'm concerned about is losing that wonderful charm that is small-town Smithfield, the beauty, the history, and all the things that these great people have brought up. Smithfield is a wonderful community, and we have to be really careful. You folks have been given a privilege to help shepherd the next generation, the next years, the next community years that happen. And if you make bad choices, we're all going to pay, and your children are going to pay because Smithfield won't be that wonderful town that we fell in love with. So, I implore you to not only think about the law, which is, of course, always crucial and your obligation, but to think about the charm and the history and the community as part of that, and really think about what is going to carry forward into future generations of Smithfield, and is this development really the best choice? And I have really doubts and concerns that it's going to look like, if you've ever heard the poem about the little boxes, little boxes, tiki-taki, all in a row, that's what developments can easily become, and we see them all around us. If you drive down the Suffolk, you see it. You drive out into other communities, you see it. Don't let tiki-taki boxes all in a row invade our historic, beautiful little town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Seeing none? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Smith.
My name is Gigi Smith. I live at 207 James Street. I want to say I'm not against this project. I have serious doubts that it's going to work out the way that it's been presented. I also am concerned that, and forgive me, that you all are just tired of hearing about it, and I am really afraid that to get it off your plate, you're going to approve it or recommend it for approval. I really, really implore you not to do that. Do your due diligence. Listen to what the people are saying. Don't have your mind made up and think, "Oh, they don't know what they're talking about." They do. I know that some of you live downtown, and just imagining that all the traffic that is set up to go down Grace, Kerry, and James, we can't handle it. The streets just can't handle it. So, that's my two cents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Anyone else?
I'm sure it's been discussed, but the speed limit just going downtown is 25 miles an hour. I've been tailgated by people coming from Carrollton exactly, just to go to work at Smithfield Foods. You think that the number of people who are going to live in this community are going to drive 25 mile an hour through downtown? I don't think that's realistic. And then we talk about some of the other areas that are going to be designated as travel zones. It's dangerous. Somebody brought up earlier about multiple entrances or points of egress. Actually, I think that's a good idea. I think having one is crazy in all the other neighborhoods that was mentioned earlier. But the traffic itself is just going to be a serious problem. We already don't have police presence in Smithfield Foods during shift changes, which I think is a big deal. You're not going to have any kind of police presence during that kind of activity with this kind of population growth and just a sudden boom. That's the only point I want to make.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Now, Mr. Luda, this is public comments. Do you want to speak during that time, or you want to wait?
I just wanted to make sure that, wanted you to know that I am here, as is Melissa, to answer questions that you might have. I don't have any public comments at this time.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes. You're right, and it's coming up later on. No further comments? Seeing none? Public comments? Item number four is closed. Our next item on the agenda tonight is item number five. This is an interest card overlay application. This is 1005 South Church Street. It's assigned. Kenneth Wagoner is the applicant. Could we have the staff report, please? You're correct. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Planning Commission comments?
I just had a question for staff. The 7-Eleven across from Smithfield Plaza, across from Kroger, is there a situation with their sign, it's just bare bulbs? I didn't know if that was a maintenance issue, if they had, if that was on purpose.
We've not received any information from them that they're applying for any sort of new signage.
They seem to be out of compliance.
Thank you.
Somebody could check on that. Thank you. It's the one that's actually on the facade of the building. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none? Planning Commission comments? Closed. Item number five, as I repeat, this is an interest card overlay application. This is 1005 South Church Street. Kenneth Wagoner, applicant. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. The applicant is seeking approval to erect an approximately 49.8 square-foot channel letters with Raceway sign. This is for a new business located at 1005 South Church Street, which was formerly the 7-Eleven. The sign will feature a muted blue color and will be illuminated internally by white LEDs. Town staff do recommend that approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining a sign permit and paying the requisite fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I take it you are the applicant?
I'm not the applicant as the sign maker, but I'm with my business associates on that business. We're not sure if it's been denied.
Now, please, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, I'm Zucari.
Your address?
409 New York Avenue, Elizabeth City.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So, we're not sure if it's been denied or not because we couldn't get up with the proposal agency. If it's been denied, we're open to see why it was denied and if there's any changes that we need to make for the sign, for it to meet code.
Yeah, but the case has not been denied. It's under consideration now. There were some issues with the lighting. There was a request for multiple lighting when it came to us at last Planning Commission meeting, but I would think that's what this is about. You've made adjustments.
We, he has made the adjustments and presented it again.
That's what we're looking at.
Right. So, is it being looked at? Is it going to get approved, or is it going to get denied? Do we need to get up with him to make changes?
We're getting ready to have that discussion right now. Yes. You have an application in front of us tonight for discussion, and that's, as a matter of order, that's what we're getting ready to go through, and you should be able to hear everything that we have to say.
Got it. Wait for you guys to finish whatever you got to do, or?
Well, if you had any additional comments that you wanted to add to your application...
We didn't, we didn't know if it was being reviewed, or it was got reviewed and got denied, or it needs to be adjusted so we can re-present it again.
Actually, we're reviewing it right now.
As of today?
As of today, actually, literally, right now. So, if we have any questions at that time, you can raise your hand. We'll call on you if we have any questions.
Yes. So, do we have a staff report? So do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. I can go over it again if you'd like.
Okay.
This is for approval to erect a 49.8 approximately square foot channel letter Raceway sign. This is for the new business at 1005 South Church Street, which was formerly the 7-Eleven. The sign will feature a muted blue color and will be illuminated with white LEDs. We do recommend that approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining a sign permit and paying the required fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
The pertinent question is, does it meet the existing sign guidelines?
Correct. The original application had the red, was gonna feature red LEDs, which would require a special sign exception. The applicant has changed their application to the white LEDs in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Ms. Clary, the sign on the property that is front to the road is a 7-Eleven sign that is wrapped up now. Is there any consideration for that sign?
The applicants did not submit an application, a sign permit application for that sign. The sign company did not have any additional information, but the applicants are present if you'd like to inquire.
Okay, and before I ask them, 'cause I planned to, what we have before us now is just the sign application for the building and not contingent upon the rest. If they were not to do something with the sign that's existing and wrapped in plastic, would that be any type of code violation?
We would not allow the sign to remain wrapped. It would need to either be removed or refaced.
Okay. And so then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, ask the applicant.
Yes.
Sir, the, we have the application in front of us here this evening, but it does not address the 7-Eleven sign, the former 7-Eleven sign that was by the street. Do you have any plans for that sign?
For the, for the road sign we're talking about?
For the road sign, yes, sir.
We're planning on it, yes. That would've been the next phase after the first one gets done.
Okay. And do you have an approximate timeline for that?
Probably within, when the first one gets hung, that's when we're gonna move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be handled separately?
Yes. So what we have before us is a sign application that meets our requirements. Does anybody have any additional concerns about the sign that's in front of us? We have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, but we don't wanna blow off any one piece.
Well, it's much improved over what we saw last meeting, and it meets all the requirements.
I agree.
Great.
All right, well, then I move that we approve the sign that's presented with the conditions from staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application as presented with the conditions attached by staff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is adopted as recommended before the town staff, I mean, town council.
Your sign is approved.
It's approved.
To be, to be clear.
Yes.
It's approved.
Item number six. You're welcome. Item number six is entrance corridor overlay application. This is 1604 South Church Street. Caps LLC. Smithfield Electric is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. The applicant is seeking approval to erect an approximately 32 square foot sign for a new business at 1604 South Church Street. The sign will feature translucent lettering in either red or maroon with an opaque white background. Town staff do recommend clarification on the ECO guidelines, as section six of signs requires internally lit signs shall use an opaque background so that only the letters are lit. Also, approval should be contingent on a sign permit application and required fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? No? Planning Commission comments, please.
Ms. Clary, can you clarify the staff recommendations on internally lit signs?
So the-
What you mean by that?
The zoning ordinance requires internal illumination with a white light with translucent letters with opaque background. In the ECO guidelines, it specifies that it shall be where only the letters are lit, which historically has been taken as just white lettering in order so that the white of the sign title would be lit through the background. And so staff just wants clarification on where the Planning Commission would like to see this go, especially since we're in the process of updating these guidelines, just so that we, at the staff level, have clarification.
So in the picture they've given us with the logo, to meet the guidelines, the only thing that could be lit would be the Smithfield Electric and their website? Is that the way the guidelines read now?
So the colors would've been reversed. It would've been maroon with the white saying the Smithfield Electric, and that's what is also found throughout South Church Street. And I do believe we provided examples of other signs.
You did, yes. But if you look at the sign there now, for the coffee cube, it's very much, very similar. I mean, obviously, different font and whatnot. There's a white background with dark lettering, and this would be white background with burgundy lettering.
But it wasn't lit, right?
It's the same sign.
But it wasn't lit?
It's not lit. The lettering's not lit.
Because they have lights that go down. I see them on the side. There's down lighting on. I'm just trying to understand what the difference is between the signs.
As I understand it, we're talking a burgundy background with white lettering.
No, the other way around.
Well, okay.
The applicants have proposed a white background with burgundy lettering.
As presented, okay.
I think for clarity, I think what you're getting at here with this opaque background is at night, late in the evening, when the sign is illuminated, the white portion would be illuminated. The only thing that would be showing light would be the lettering. This maroon or red lettering. That was the only thing that you would see lit up. The white would block out the light. That's the way I'm understanding it.
Because it's currently lit externally, and they're gonna do internal lighting. That's why it's different. And you can't do that on a white background with internal lighting.
Okay, so to-
I know a guy, you know, used to do some things.
Yeah, you do, don't you? You do. So we theoretically can't approve this sign as presented, then, and meet our own guidelines, correct?
Correct.
Right. If he's willing to do-
And they're not here.
And they're not here. If he's willing to do the reverse knockout, which would be the maroon background with the white letters, that would be fine with the internal lighting, but he's not there, not here. So I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we table this discussion till the applicant can be present.
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second. But to understand, you saying because it's white, that it would not block out the internal lighting?
It wouldn't comply with the ordinance, because the background is white, and it says the letters have to be illuminated. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes. But he cannot use a white background. That's what you're saying in the ordinance?
Because of the way the ordinance is written, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Technically, it can be done, but not by the ordinance.
Well, if he were here tonight, he could make changes that you could approve.
Right.
But he chose not to attend.
Right.
And that's, you know-
We could make the color swap that we just discussed.
Exactly.
If we could do the maroon background with the white lettering if he were here.
The applicant originally submitted both of those options. Staff did suggest that he go with the maroon background with the white lettering. However, the red lettering is his logo, so he did want it to keep the sign consistent with his logo. The confusion that this, or the clarification that staff was seeking was if this would be acceptable, the guidelines could be read to interpret it as being acceptable if Planning Commission was in favor of the background. It's just because he's calling it, he's in line with the zoning ordinance by using opaque backgrounds with translucent lettering, just in the color of red or maroon.
But he could put some sort of opaque material on the inside of his sign not to transmit the light through the white area, and therefore, the red lettering would be more prominent. So he would have an option to opaque the inside of his sign as to block the light coming through the white.
He is proposing an opaque white background for the sign.
With, well, if that's, if he were here, then we would have to say what percentage, at 100% blockage of opaqueness, if that's correct grammar?
Close. We know what you meant, at least.
So he could, 'cause this is his logo, and if he could keep the white sign and do that, then he would need to block the transmission of light through the white and only allow the burgundy to persist, but we would need reassurance that that would happen.
Would Planning Commission be willing to grant a conditional approval, that there's a certain percentage of opaqueness required?
No, I wouldn't want a certain percentage. I would want 100% if that's the way it's gonna, if that's the way the ordinance is written.
A motion still stands at table. It's till the applicant can appear.
I don't see that we can take, yes. The motion's on the floor.
Okay.
But if there's, but if he feels strongly about his logo and his sign and the way he wants it to appear, there may be other solutions other than reversing the colors.
Yes. No further discussion? We have a motion to table and a second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to table. It's been adopted. Next on our agenda tonight is we have a public hearing. This is a special sign exception application. This is 1604 South Church Street. This is the same one.
It was the detachment for the previous-
Yeah. Okay, this is item number seven, public hearing. There's a special sign exception application. This is for 1282, correction, 1282 Smithfield Plaza. Doug Collins is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. The applicant is seeking approval for a special sign exception pursuant to the Smithfield zoning ordinance, Article 10, Section M, to reface, repaint, and structurally alter the existing legal non-conforming detached sign for the shopping center. The applicant intends to remove the arch at the top of the sign, reducing the overall height by one foot, three inches, bringing the height of the sign to approximately 20 feet. According to the Smithfield zoning ordinance, we allow for a detached sign with a maximum height of 15 feet in the planned shopping center zoning district. Additionally, Article 10 K4F1B1 allows for a maximum sign area of 100 square feet for groups of businesses or 32 square feet for businesses, whichever is less. The applicant is proposing a combined sign area of 102.5 square feet, with the larger Smithfield Shopping Plaza at 42.5 square feet, and the four smaller signs at 15 square feet each. Additionally, the applicant is seeking entrance corridor overlay review and approval for the reface and color change to the detached sign. The applicant intends to replace the Smithfield Shopping Plaza sign with a dark blue and gray background, white lettering. The remaining of the signs for the additional stores will remain the same. The applicant has already installed the approved landscaping for the detached sign. Town staff do recommend approval under the following condition, that this approval applies solely to the sign shown in the submitted plans, and any replacement, if larger or substantially different from this one, must be reviewed and decided by the Planning Commission and Town Council, if applicable, through a new special sign exception application. Additionally, a sign permit and fee payment is required. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Did anyone sign it? No? Anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of or opposed to this application, now is the opportunity.
I'm Doug Collins. I'm the applicant.
Yes, sir. Is there anything you would like to add?
The applicant stands for, uh, the sign. I'm Doug Collins. I'm General Manager of Scotty Signs in Newport News, Virginia. The owner is seeking to reconfigure the sign, get rid of the arch, and get more contemporary graphics on the sign and a better colorization. Like she spoke to, it's actually reduce the size of the sign, reduce the height of the sign a little bit. As part of this, we also are changing the process, lights out on the inside to white LED lights.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. No one else to speak on behalf of and favor of or opposition? Seeing none. The public hearing portion of this application is closed. Planning Commission comments, please.
Well, I think, I think the new sign is a vast improvement over the one that's there. Just getting rid of that arch on the top and modernizing the whole thing. I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Will there be a fourth panel?
I'm sorry, the applicant? You have a question for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Would you come back?
A fourth panel on the sign?
Refer to the bottom one?
Yeah. So you've got Kroger, and Burks, and Roses.
So right now, they don't have a tenant graphics on there. The shopping center is nearly full. I imagine it could go on at any time, but that would be subject to a different patient permanent, I imagine.
Thank you.
You can stay. Mr. Collins, you can stay. Has any consideration been given to update the colors of the other signs to match this sign more appropriately? I.e., these are bright red versus this is blue and gray? So Burks and Roses signs are bright red? Is there a thing to bring this into compliance with the blue that's in the sign already to make it?
The plan with those is just to put those faces, reuse those existing faces.
I hear you, but then on their discussion on the last sign, the Kroger sign would therefore be non-compliant, because it's got a white background that's, I'm assuming, not opaque. So that sign would not be in compliance with our zoning ordinance of what we just discussed.
I think part of the problem, this was done before.
Yeah, I think the point of this, this is a legal non-conforming sign.
Yes.
So they're able to make use of their sign by law, I believe. Existing faces, they're not planning on replacements at this time. Just the main cabinet.
But it would be nice for them to match.
Yes, that's what we would like, what we cause.
But their grandfather doesn't-
Exactly. Exactly.
Yes, and again, that's why we wanted to make sure that we understood Planning Commission's intentions, so that while we're updating the ECO guidelines, we can make sure that we're very clear on what the Planning Commission expects for their signage. Thank you.
Attorney Riddick, anything you'd like to add?
I think their application is pretty straightforward. I mean, they're not asking, I mean, it's legal non-conforming now. They can leave it just like it is. It seems to me they're proposing improvements, and I guess it's, they're incremental improvements as time goes on.
Thank you.
What happens when these stores change over and Burks becomes Pope's? What happens to that sign? How does that change? Does that change to stay to red? Does that change to comply with the colors of this sign? How does, how does future expansion or changeover in the shopping center change?
I don't think your sign ordinance requires every sign to be the same.
Well, one of the problems we had with the tobacco mart and all was it had too many colors in the sign. That was one of our big issues. It wasn't more of a monochromatic, more harmonious sign, and so now we've got lots of colors going on. So I'm trying to, I want consistency other than when it's logos.
So being this is a special sign exception, as tenants change, can we require that they come back and make sure that the colors of the four signs below the main one are in compliance with our ECO guidelines?
We can.
So we can handle it that way, Dr. Pope?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to maintain that consistency that we see. Logos are logos, and we have to be respectful of that, but I don't think Roses and Burks signs are logos there. I think they're just advertisers.
But I don't think Rosa, Roses and Burks signs are logos there, I think they're just advertisers.
Yeah, it's really just the font.
I'd also like to discuss with Planning Commission is that they're, they're asking, our ordinance requires this sign be 15 feet tall. It's already 21 and a half, I think, give or take, so it was already outside of, it is, is legal non-conforming. But if, this is an opportunity for us to say, hey, our sign ordinance needs to be 15 feet for shopping centers, if there's an opportunity for us to enforce that here. Or, we really ought to consider changing our ordinance. Because if we're gonna give them a special sign exception for 20 feet, and we think that's appropriate so that it can be seen for all the reasons that you would want a 20-foot sign as, as a shop owner, we need to consider that because this is, you know, we're saying, well, okay, well, you know, this shop has been here 20, 25 years, whatever it may take, and we're okay with the sign still being more than this. I mean, this is an opportunity for us to say, we're really gonna get hard on our ECO guidelines and this is what we said and this is what we plan to stick to. Now, they could still keep the sign here, and I'm not doubting that the new sign looks 10,000 times better than the old sign. But I do think we have an opportunity here that we have a brand-new sign in front of us to enforce our guidelines if we choose to do so. If we choose not to do so, we really ought to look at changing our guidelines because there's no point in having guidelines if we're gonna give exceptions for them.
The problem is if we, I realize we have an opportunity because they are making changes. So we have an opportunity to make them put in a new sign at 15 feet. The problem is if you look at the trees surrounding that sign, you already can't see Kroger, Beal and Roses from the street.
Sure.
So it's not serving anybody any purpose. It's not helping the retailers if you make them do that.
I wasn't really arguing that we did. It was, but it was like, hey, this is something we really need to at least have on our brains if this is what we want to do. The point that the trees have matured over the last 25 years and grown is a solid point. I mean, it's, it's, that's what we want. We want trees to grow and mature.
Right, I mean.
And we want our businesses to be successful. And we want our people to be able to find the, the Kroger when they come to town or, or whatever the case might be.
Mr. Collins, correct?
Correct.
Is that, has there been any consideration about what to do with those trees, considering how much they blocked the sign?
Have not heard of any of those trees.
I'm not advocating killing trees, don't, don't go there. Don't write that, Steve.
If you put a solar panel there, it'd help.
You're killing me.
For me, I, I don't know if I have a problem with the 20-foot sign. This sign does, does not seem obtrusive to me as opposed to the old Hardy sign that used to be in front of Hardy's 25 years ago. But I, I don't know if we need to look at our sign ordinance and say it's 15 or 20 feet, but I, I don't know. To me, this is not an obtrusive sign and to be honest with you, I don't even know if I pay attention to that sign since I've seen it so many times it blends into the background of my day-to-day life. But I don't know what it does to a person coming here for the first time. So, I don't know if I have a problem with the height.
And what I'm thinking is, the applicants come here to improve this sign. If we insist that they come within compliance and reduce the height of this sign, would that discourage other applicants with grandfather signs?
Absolutely would.
To do any change?
Yep.
Absolutely would. And he's making a nice improvement.
Yes.
I, I think though to Dr. Pope's earlier point that, you know, I, I'm in favor of the sign, but as they replace the four signs below, that we make sure that they come back and fall into meet our ECO guidelines?
The four signs below? Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you, sir. Seeing none? We have the application before us.
Chairman, I move that we approve the sign as presented with staff recommendations and the additional requirement that any signs on the four below fall into ECO guidelines.
Second.
As they are replaced, yes.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the application that is presented with the condition that the smaller signs, if, whenever they may are updated, become part in compliance with the ECO guidelines. Call for the question.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion has been adopted. You're welcome, sir. Okay, moving on, we have item number eight on our agenda tonight, and this is a site plan application. This is TP, this is tax plat number 22, tag 01, tag 003, Mallory Point Phase A. John Zazuki, Zazuki, applicant. I don't believe that's you. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. At the Tuesday, July 6th, 2021 Town Council meeting, Town Council did approve the Mallory Point official zoning map amendment, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning ordinance text amendment, and three special use permits. This is for the construction of 501 single-family dwellings, 198 duplex units, 107 attached residential townhomes, totaling 812 units which are to be for sale. The applicant is now seeking approval for the site plan for Phase A. This would be for 135 parcels. In addition, there will be two open space parcels, approximately 1.227 acres and 1.449 acres, and then a common area of approximately 45 acres. The lot features 25-foot front and rear setbacks and 6-foot side yard setbacks. The applicant proposed project is in conformance with the town zoning and subdivision ordinance. Town staff do recommend approval as submitted under the following conditions. The submission of five hard signed sealed copies of the site, site plan once approved. The submission of a, of a construction bond in the amount of 120% of the approved cost estimate. The submission of a landscaping bond in the amount of 120% of the approved landscaping cost estimate. The submission of inspection fees based upon the approved cost estimate. Any change in the number of units utilizing the pump station could impact the flow calculation and could require updated configurations. And the submission and approval of updated sheets reflecting the final comments on the electrical configurations and proposed pump station by the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clary.
I suppose, Mr. Natalepano, Mr. Napolitano, that you're speaking on behalf of this application?
Being that it wasn't a public hearing, I'm here for this part just for, to answer any questions should Planning Commission have any.
Yes, thank you, sir. Planning comments? Planning Commission comments?
Only yet one, Mr. Napolitano. Somewhere during the discussions of the subdivision in the earlier phases, I thought we, or there was a discussion of connecting this phase to the future development of the other phases via a bridge across the wetlands in order to have these residents be able to access the development without having to get in their car, meaning it wasn't a vehicular bridge, but it was a pedestrian bridge or bicycle bridge, whatever you may want to call it. But I thought I remember us discussing a bridge across that wetlands to connect to future phases.
I would have to go back and relook at that. I honestly do not recall that and I know to try and install that, I mean, the, the applications and the wetlands and things that would be involved, I'm not even sure that we could do it. But I'm certainly happy to go back and relook at that, I mean, we have plenty more phases to go.
Well, I don't know where that was, but I thought there was. But my question to that was, is where is this gonna be in this, in this particular part? When I sent an email to Ms. Clary, she said that she doesn't remember those discussions and I don't know why I remember that, but I thought I remembered a bridge.
It may have been, it may have been a discussion at one point, but again, the, the, uh, the, the prohibidence of all the wetlands in there, um, trying to build something across there may have gotten dropped during that discussion.
Yeah, I thought it was just gonna be a, a pier bridge, but not anything elaborate, but just more of a connection, pedestrian bridge to allow them to access the pools without having to get all the way out onto Battery Park Road. I, I thought that was somewhere in our discussions, but.
I don't recall that.
I don't remember about a road, a road to connect them, so, to keep so much traffic from coming out of the development. Anyone who wanted to travel within the development, that was mentioned of a possible road over some of the wetlands. I think that was a creek or something in there. But that was, uh, that was pretty much dropped from consideration because of the restrictions that he mentioned concerning the wetlands.
I guess if it's not in there, it's not in there, but I thought we had discussions of that at some point.
Any other comments? Questions, the applicant?
Question, and, and we have a pump station planned in, in here. Is that, yes, we have a, oh, what page am I on? Lord have mercy. Page 44 in your guide, ladies and gentlemen, uh, in your PDF on your computer. There's a pump station here. I just want to ensure that the pump station is built in, the, the building itself surrounding the pump is built in accordance with our new pump station guidelines. So they have to match the, the neighborhood.
I will answer that question with a yes. However, I will tell you that through the, uh, process of getting approvals, that pump station has gone back and forth, I can't tell you how many times. At the end of the day, it will be built to match in the community, um, and it will have a building around it, that type of thing. But it has gone back and forth so many times, Mr. Pack, that I'm not 100% certain to tell you where it, where it landed with Department of Public Utilities.
Okay. That's a fair answer.
But I think you're getting to the point of where we just recently updated the pump station architecture and.
Yes, sir, we, we did. We, we, we passed ordinance to make sure that, that the pump stations, uh, aren't built like the one they built out of Hardy Elementary, frankly. That's, that's what kind of got us and, and, and Mr. Napolitano said it, it would not, it would match the neighborhood and that, that's what we asked for.
Okay. Any further comments? No further comments? We have the application before us.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve with the staff's recommended zoning recommendations, the staff's recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion to approve.
Well, no, the further discussion item, their sign, is this also a sign approval?
I think that's second, the next one.
It's a special sign exception.
That's the following.
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve this application that is presented with conditions attached by staff. Call for the question.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion has been adopted. Now, the one you mentioned, Dr. Pope, I believe that's the next one. This is a public hearing. This is a special sign exception application. This is tax plan number 22, tag 01, same as 4003, Mallory Point Phase A. John Zazuki, the applicant. You can correct me on that. Okay, staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. The applicant is seeking approval for two entranceway subdivision signs. They are eight feet in height and feature an approximate 11-foot 10-inch red brick support structure. The sign features a two-square-foot sign panel with MP and a 16-square-foot sign panel Mallory Point Estates. The brick is a herringbone pattern and has a concrete cap. The total square footage of the support structure is approximately 80.7 square feet, and this does exceed the amount of square footage allowed in Article 10 K1B5, and therefore a special sign exception will be required. The signs will be landscaped with various daly lilies, holly bushes, ornamental grasses, and approximately 190-square-foot planting bed. Town staff do recommend that approval as submitted under the condition that they do submit a landscaping bond in the amount of 120% of the landscape cost estimate along with a sign permit and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. This being a public hearing and we have no one sign, we have one? No?
For the run, my name is John Napolitano, my address is 1492 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach. Good evening, Planning Commission. I will tell you this, I call him John Z. I cannot pronounce the last name either, so. The reason for, for our request for the sign, on our original plan, as you know, on Phase A, we have, um, an island in the center with the, with the two entrances coming in. We had to do that because, and as I heard earlier this evening, we were doing a discussion about having only one entrance into a community. Newer communities do require two entrances for emergency reasons and things like that. So by doing the two lanes that we have and the way that we designed it, it met the qualifications. Originally, our sign was gonna be a two-sided sign right in the middle of the island. The problem with that is with new site triangles and setbacks and things like that, you can't see it from the road as you drive by. We just did a community in Suffolk where we put that in and literally you can drive right by this community and not even see the sign. So what we wanted to do, sort of like across the street of Wellington, not as big as, as Wellington, but to have two, two nice signs out front so that in either direction you go, you'll see, uh, the Estates of Mallory Point. I think that's what we're calling that, that phase. The MP that they're showing on there is we're trying to brand the entire community with that MP. It'll be on all of our signs, it'll be on our clubhouses, it'll be on, uh, if we put columns in different areas to, to differentiate the sections and things, it'll have that MP on there as well. We're trying to use that to sort of brand the community that our marketing folks all came up with. So that's the reason that we're asking for the sign exception. You know, when you get into a community like this, it's not all black and white on the plans and as you get going and as we look at some of the other sections as we go, we may be back to ask for some more sign exceptions and all, trying to just, um, clarify the community because as they, as, you know, as you've seen the site plan, as they run together, we want to try to separate the different areas of it and give them their own unique character. So this is the first one we're here for, hopefully the last, but we might be back to adjust some other signs as we go forward and I hope you guys, uh, will look favorably upon us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This being a public hearing, anyone wish to speak in favor or of opposition to? Now is the opportunity. Seeing none, public hearing portion of this application is closed. Planning Commission comments, please.
I think the sign's very attractive.
I agree.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay.
For clarification, is that with the staff recommendations?
With staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just looking for the sign one more time. What page is that? Is this one? Okay.
Do you want to see this?
Yeah.
84.
That's it. Page 84?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve this application that is presented with town staff conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is adopted. Good evening, sir. Okay. We have about five more applications for tonight. I'm going to recommend a short break. A short ten-minute break. Five-minute break? Okay. I recommend a short five-minute break. This meeting will resume at eight oh-five. No, what time is it? Eight oh-five, yes.
Depending what clock you're looking at.
Yeah, really.
I can share with you.
Ready? Ready? Let's get ready here.
Which means he better watch his back.
So you're gonna leave and come back?
Nope.
You're just gonna leave?
Nope. Assistant Chief Myers is not back yet. I suppose we can continue without him. Okay. This planning commission meeting is resumed. Item number nine. Ten, I'm sorry. Keep up.
Don't go backwards.
Item number ten. We have a discussion item here, and this is rezoning, FLUM, a future land use map amendment, and six special use permits. This is tag plan number twenty-one-eight, tag zero-four, tag zero-zero-zero-seventeen, The Grange, LSMP LLC, Kara Melissa Venable, the applicant. Can we have the staff report, please?
The applicant is proposing to construct two-hundred-and-sixty-seven total units. There will be five cottages, which are short-term rentals, thirty-two duplex unit lots, and forty-eight single-family dwelling unit lots, and one-hundred-and-eighty-two apartments. This project also includes Smithfield Farmers Market, which will host at least one restaurant, retail space, and several vendor spaces. The three-story hotel, not to exceed forty-two feet in height, with proposed retail space and restaurant space. There'll be a one-story retail building, a two-story, and one-story professional office buildings. Additional improvements include parking areas near the market, and the Christian Outreach Building, and the Schoolhouse Museum. The proposed development can be accessed via five entrances, one on the future extension of James, one on the extension of Grace Street, two off of Main Street, The Grange, and then right in, right out on Main Street, and a right in only off of Route ten. Following the site-specific nature of a PMA, the applicants have crafted their application package to include the following. The first is the rezoning. It's the Conditional Official Zoning Map Amendment. The desired use of the property would be classified as single-family attached, detached dwellings, duplex residential dwellings, and a mix of residential dwelling types, community buildings, swimming pools, quasi-public parks, fields, related facilities, eating establishments, hotels, and offices, along with retail sales. All of these are permitted uses in Article three-J two-B of the planned mixed-use development district. They are also proposing multifamily residential dwellings, which are permitted only after they successfully acquire a special use permit. Second is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is the Future Land Use Map Amendment. The near entirety of this property in question is designated on the Future Land Use Map as commercial mixed-use. This designation encompasses nine parcels, almost all of which make up the majority of the proposed site. There's one remaining parcel, which is designated on the Future Land Use Map as historic district residential, and then there's ten remaining smaller parcels that are designated as historic district slash mixed-use. The first special use permit is for multifamily residential dwellings. In accordance with Article three-J two-C one, the applicant is seeking a SUP for one-hundred-and-eighty-two apartments. They will be located on the east side of the property, close to Route ten, and will be comprised of seven three-story buildings. Three of the buildings are fifteen carriage houses over garages. The, these proposed multifamily buildings will feature a maximum height of thirty-nine feet for the three-story buildings. Accompanying this residential development will be a clubhouse less than thirty-five feet in height with a pool and a dog park. The second special use permit is for a waiver of maximum density. The applicant is seeking an additional SUP for waiver of maximum density. According to Article three-J two-D, the maximum allowable density for multifamily dwellings is twelve dwelling units per net developer acre. The applicants are proposing a density of twenty-three-point-six dwelling units per developer acre for the multifamily dwelling area. The overall density for the entire project is seven dwelling units per acre, including single-family and duplex units. Isolated, the single-family and duplex dwellings are at two-point-nine dwelling units per net developer acre. Article three-J two-D does allow for eight dwelling units per acre for attached dwellings, and five dwelling units per acre for detached dwellings. The third special use permit is a waiver of parking and loading requirements. They are seeking an SUP from Article three-J two-C eighteen for relief from Article eight-E twenty-nine, which requires a minimum of two parking spaces per dwelling unit, plus one visitor space for every three units for multifamily dwellings, and also Article eight-B four, which requires off-street parking to be located on the same lot. The applicants are providing two parking spaces per unit for the multifamily dwellings at three-hundred-and-sixty-four spaces instead of the required four-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces. The applicants are also proposing a shared parking agreement for the development, including off-street parking. Finally, the applicant is seeking relief from Article eight-B seventeen and eight-F one-E to allow off-street loading spaces to also count towards required parking spaces. The remaining parking spaces for the restaurant, retail, offices, and hotel and market are in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The fourth special use permit is for a waiver of yard requirements. The, the applicants are requesting a fourth special use permit for a waiver of yard requirements through Article three-J two-C twenty. This is for relief from the required yard setbacks. Article three-J two-F two-B requires the following yard setbacks for commercial: front yard at forty feet, side yard at twenty feet, and rear yard at twenty feet. The applicants are proposing the following commercial yard setbacks: a zero front yard setback, a ten-foot side yard setback, and a twenty-foot rear yard setback. Article three-J two-F two-B requires the following yard setbacks for residential: be thirty-five-foot front yard setback, fifteen-foot side yard setback, and thirty-five-foot rear yard setback. The applicants are proposing a fourteen-foot front yard setback, a ten-foot side yard setback, and a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback. Additionally, the applicants are seeking a reduction in the required front yard setback for the multifamily dwellings of twenty-five feet, allowing for a front yard setback of ten feet. Finally, the applicants are requesting a waiver of yard requirements in accordance with Smithfield zoning ordinance three-J two-C twenty to allow a smaller setback requirement where the property is contiguous to a separate zoning district downtown for two properties along Main Street. The fifth special use permit, short-term rentals. The applicants are seeking a fifth special use permit to allow five short-term rental units. Each unit is a single detached, single-family dwelling that will be utilized as a rental property. The sixth special use permit is a waiver of maximum building height. This is in accordance with three-J two-C twenty-four for the seven three-story multifamily apartments and for the hotel. The three-story multifamily buildings will not exceed thirty-nine feet, and the hotel will not exceed forty-two feet. The remaining buildings will not exceed the thirty-five feet in height. All components of this application that have been updated are included in this packet, and again, the original submission for the application is located on the second tab. This application appeared on the Planning Commission agenda as a public hearing on Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and a discussion item at the Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Special Planning Commission meeting. At the Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission had the following recommendations: favorably recommend the approval of the Conditional Official Zoning Map Amendment, the rezoning, to Town Council; favorable recommendation to Town Council for the approval of their request for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Future Land Use Map Amendment; a favorable recommendation of the first SUP request to allow multifamily residential dwellings in development with the condition that the buildings do not exceed a height of forty-six-point-five for the four-story, and thirty-nine feet for the three-story; favorable recommendation to allow a waiver of maximum density to allow no more than twenty-seven-point-five dwelling units per net developer acre for the multifamily residential dwellings, with the overall development containing seven-point-nine dwelling units per net developer acre; favorable recommendation of the SUP request for a waiver of parking and loading requirements; a favorable recommendation for the request for a waiver of yard requirements; and a favorable recommendation request to allow the five short-term rentals; SUP number six was a recommendation denial for a waiver of maximum building height. At the Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, Dr. Pope expressed clarification on his recommendation, on his motion to recommend denial of the height for waiver of maximum building height. He stated that it was, he was in support of the hotel and three-story buildings, and it was his intention to deny the height request for the four-story buildings. Please keep in mind, based on these comments that have received, town staff do suggest an archaeological monitoring of the ground disturbance during development. This application did appear as a public hearing item on August first for the two thousand and twenty-three Town Council meeting, and a work session was held on Thursday, August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This item appeared as a discussion item at the Tuesday, September fifth Town Council meeting, and was referred back to the Planning Commission. Since this application originally appeared before Planning Commission, the following items have been updated: the removal of medical office space and increase in professional office square footage; total number of units reduced from three-oh-four to two-sixty-seven; duplexes reduced to thirty-two units; apartments reduced to one-eighty-two; and single-family dwellings reduced to forty-eight units. There was removal of the four-story multifamily apartment buildings. The overall density was reduced from seven-point-nine to seven. Multifamily density decreased from twenty-seven-point-five to twenty-three-point-six, and single-family and duplex unit density decreased to two-point-nine. There was an increase in open space from twenty-one percent to approximately twenty-four percent. As the drafting of the staff report, we did receive updated comments from VDOT, and they are enclosed. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Okay. This is a discussion item. It's not a public hearing. Would the applicant like to add anything to the application?
Like just to give a little history or a quick recap of conversation that I had with my father immediately following the September Town Council meeting. In that discussion, I shared with him what was discussed at Town Council.
Sir, name and address for the record, please.
I apologize. Joe Luter, four, one-nine-two-five-nine Farm Road, Smithfield.
Thank you.
And, and in that conversation, he, he said, you know, I can understand why there is some opposition based upon the plan. And he felt strongly, as, as I did, and as we still do, that the plan that we originally presented was, was a very solid plan, but he understood the concerns. And he asked, he tasked me with updating the plan based upon the primary objections that we heard. So several things that we did. Number one, we reduced the apartments. Number one, we reduced the apartments, the two apartment buildings from four stories to three stories, again, eliminating thirty total units. One thing that was not discussed that we did was, we modified the access point into this development off of Mill Swamp Road. We are adding a lane that we believe will encourage people to, coming from, coming from Mill Swamp Road, trying to get to Main Street, it will encourage them to actually come through our development and not continue on the carry into the heart of town. So that's a change that we have added to the project that was not discussed and disclosed. We think that, we think that will help with traffic flow. And again, wasn't required based upon the traffic study, but based upon the concern we had from citizens, we thought that that was an easy thing to do and would, would reduce the amount of traffic going down Carey Street to connect with Grace. Those are the, those are the primary changes that, that we made to the project. We, we hope that you all will, and, and we know that the concern that the Planning Commission had was the four stories, so we, we modified that. But based upon our modifications to reduce density, we hope that you all will see fit to approve our revised plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Venable, anything you would like to add?
I'll stand by for questions that may come up.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Commission comments?
Quick question, Mr. Luter. In the original plan, you had eliminated the retail space in the front of the neighborhood, and now it's back. Is that correct? Is that an oversight, or is that something that's, was just copied and pasted and still stuck in there?
No, sir, there were two buildings previously that were there after your comment between, I think, the April and May meetings. There were two buildings up front previously, and we...
Was it the one beside the BMP?
We, that's exactly right. So we turned, that became a park, and we increased the size of the BMP if it were necessary. And we made smaller the building that's across, across Grain Street, but that still remained, that's still the same building.
One of your concerns, I believe, was two-story building, additional two-story and one.
Just from some reason, I thought it was gone. Philosophical question, but I don't know if we can get an answer, but traffic, that's the issue. How likely is it to cut off Gray Street where the current ninety-degree turn is? Cut off Gray Streets that you can't go down Gray Street and take your Karen's Way straight through? Can that be done? Is that an issue for VDOT, safety issues? But if you do that, then the traffic has to come through the development and not go downtown.
I think that would have to go, that recommendation would have to go back through VDOT, and I, the, the whole idea with these mixed-use developments is, well, two things. One, connectivity for mixed-use developments. What we've heard from Smithfield over and over again is that this is, this was supposed to be a continuation of downtown, not a cutoff development that didn't allow pedestrian connectivity and vehicular connectivity. But the, I think the change that we've made from Carey for Mill Swamp coming down is this, we're adding a turn lane, and you can come in and get, get through the project as opposed to using Carey Street, which we think if we cut our neighborhood off from downtown, what you're suggesting, would actually then encourage more traffic or continue the same problems that currently exist. So this actually provides some relief, we believe.
Well, it wouldn't cut off pedestrian traffic. We're trying to cut off vehicular traffic.
Right.
But the, I mean, for me, the ideal solution for this would be to make Carey Street one-way leaving town, make everybody come through Carey Street and down Karen's Way, keep the existing Gray Street exit by Cornet's Auto Store, get rid of the Grain Street entrance and allow traffic that would force it through the neighborhood and force it through your commercial area would be a more palatable solution for traffic. And, I mean, ideally, the ideal solution is Route ten, but we're not there. But to me, that would be a very ideal solution, but I don't, and then extend Clay Street over one more block to, to Carey Street, and then that way, those folks have a way around about a, go around a block to get back to their facilities. But that would force all traffic through the development and not through the downtown area.
I think VDOT has had multiple times to look at this. They didn't make those recommendations or suggestions. I feel like I need to rely on VDOT as they're the expert for, for this circumstance. But obviously, as we get through engineering, final engineering, that, you know, they'll, they'll continue to work with us, and, and we can suggest solutions, they can tell us what's best, that these, ultimately, these will be their roadways.
Also, part of the conversation with VDOT was the desire to have the Grain Street aligned with Church Manor Trail.
That's exactly.
So that we would have that intersection where they aligned.
Better alignment off of Main Street, yeah.
I would also add that by doing that, right now, right now, traffic takes a left on Gray Street. They round that, they pick up speed going up the hill, and they round that turn. There's no stop sign there. Forcing the traffic to come to Grace, to Grace and Grange, there's going to be a stop sign there. And as a result of that, in my opinion, and others, you know, the, that will drive some traffic not to come through the development and onto Grace Street. That will drive plant traffic in particular, those, those that currently use Grace to get to the plants, we believe it will drive them to the bypass. But again, that's just a, just an opinion. But that stop sign, if you eliminate that stop sign there and leave it as it is today, I'm not sure that you'll, you'll accomplish quite as much as you want.
I would cut Gray Street off altogether and make, you can't go through Gray Street right there, but again, I don't...
Gray Street's a V, is a VDOT road, and I don't think we have...
That's, that's alternate Route two fifty-eight.
Yeah.
I get it. That's just philosoph, that's a philosophical discussion, because that would eliminate the traffic coming downtown and force it through here, but...
Question. I have a couple of questions.
Vice chair.
Yeah. I know you would use the four stories to the three-story apartments. Will those still be secure access entry as designed previously?
We hope so.
Okay.
I mean, again, one of, you know, one of the, there, there is a, there is a cost component to that. It is our intent, and we'll obviously have to apply, we'll go through, this is a rezoning process, as you all know, we'll have to go through the application process. You know, we certainly would like for it to be.
Okay. And then a question came up this evening, I think, before you all got here. What is the actual planned phasing of construction in terms of commercial, residential, you know, retail, medical, farmer's market, hotel?
Sure. The phase one, the phase one is, is infrastructure and farmer's market and some single-family cottages and, and professional. And again, retail demand is there in the front. That's, that's phase one. The, the second phase is, Melissa?
You should pass.
Yeah.
There was some, some discrepancy between the narrative and the map as to what was actually going to be built. I think there were questions about that this evening. We just wanted to get that confirmed by you.
Sure, okay. So again, in fact, that was phase one, as I described. Phase, phase two is the multifamily and, and some additional single-family and duplex. And phase three is the hotel, retail, one retail building in the front, and, and a single-family duplex in the very back.
All the, all the single families in the rear.
Yeah.
The, this is different than the original application.
Okay.
It is a different sequence. Not the first phase, the first phase is generally the same.
Right, right.
I have another question concerning, back to the traffic. There was discussion at the previous meetings about encouraging the packing plant employees to use Berry Hill Road to exit, to go toward ten. And I don't recall, but is there any effort? I think it would work better if there was a stop, a red light there. Has any effort been made in that?
For a stoplight there?
Yes, sir.
We, we have had, we've had conversations with VDOT about a number of possibilities, but that's, that's all it is. That is, that is one. Second is, right now, we only have a right-in, right-out into this development. We, we want to fully explore whether we can get in and out halfway down the project. Again, it's not, it currently, we're not presenting that, we, but we are going to continue to pursue that. But the, to, to answer your question, no, no serious conversations about a stoplight there at this time. We've only planted some ideas. But we've, we have been in, in contact as recently as three weeks ago with, with VDOT personnel about the project.
I know a lot of people expecting on-off ramps from Mill Swamp Road. I don't think that's going to happen, not, not in the near future. But a light, a light on Berry Hill, I think, would be quite helpful. And as far as you know, VDOT is not vehemently opposed to that.
Melissa, can you speak to that? I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to misspeak.
Right. What we can speak about is the traffic impact analysis that was submitted, presented, and approved. They were very, they were very adamant at the time that we could get a right-in only. Mr. Luter is pursuing conversations about a right-in, right-out. We have not pursued, with the traffic impact analysis, the consultant and my team, we have not pursued the idea of a light at Berry Hill Road that was outside the scope of what they requested from us. But again, Mr. Luter may be pursuing conversations with VDOT and, and also with Smithfield Foods to see if they can, you know, move forward with those ideas, but that was outside the scope of what VDOT asked us to do with this project. Does that make sense?
Yes, okay.
But again, we, we have, we have had specific conversations about the right turn off of Mill Swamp onto Karen's Way, and we streamlined, streamlined that road through the, through the project, and, and fully expect that that will reduce a lot of traffic going down Carey.
Could you repeat that? You say?
Mill Swamp Road connects to Carey. We're proposing a, a turn lane into our project off of Mills, we're basically, Mill Swamp and Carey come together, with the intent that that will drive Mill Swamp Road traffic down Karen's Way to get out to the bypass as opposed to continuing down Carey Street. It will be a, we believe it will be a quicker, more convenient access for those that live on Mill Swamp Road.
Okay, alright.
Does that make sense?
Yes, understood.
Okay.
Another question about parking. In regards to the hotel, I see that there are seventy spaces planned for the hotel, but there was also this thing about so many spaces for a square foot, and I didn't see any numbers for that. Could you explain? Ms. Venable?
Sure, I, I can, there's not a lot for me to explain at this point. We use the minimum standards for the hotel, so one per unit and one per two hundred square feet of assembly. That is the equivalent of seventy spaces for the footprint that we're showing. We don't have a final footprint. It may, if it shrinks a little, we'll need less parking. If it grows, we'll have to have more parking. We'll have to meet the standards that the town sets forth, but right now, we're using the minimum standards, and we're showing that here. The hotel, one per unit, we had assumed, I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize, we assumed a certain number of units in that hotel. It's a boutique hotel, it's not a large Marriott. And then additionally, we need one per two hundred square feet of assembly that's part of the hotel, so that equaled seventy spaces for the hotel. It was, there's a hotel we're working on currently in Suffolk, and that has a hundred and twenty-six rooms, so we would obviously need more space, more spaces for that hotel. But again, this was planned to be a very small boutique-type hotel. As Tammy pointed out to me, this plan actually has, is overparked because we have less units, but we still have the same number of parking. So we have a better ratio on this plan that you're looking at today, but still asking for the reduction because once we factor in handicap spaces and things like that. But I feel very, very comfortable with the plan that's in front of you and, and being, having flexibility in parking once we understand what the final footprint of that hotel is.
Okay, but you want to...
I was just going to add that if approved, when it came to site plan approval, we would verify based upon the site plan that was submitted that they met at least the minimum parking requirements for that specific structure.
Okay. But to be clear, the hotel lists seventy units. Do I understand that correctly?
Up two.
I'm sorry?
Up two seventy units.
Up two seventy units?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you, you see what I'm getting at. It's on the general plan. On the parking, it says hotel, one per unit, plus one per two hundred square feet, and that's where my question is.
Right, I, I do understand your question. I also know that we have, like I said, we were showing the minimum standards. I, there's, there's many more than seventy spaces right here in this particular location, so right behind the hotel here. I think we factored in actually a smaller hotel than a seventy-room hotel, but, again, I'm not, this is a zoning document. When we get to final site plan, we'll be sure that it's all adequate and appropriate. We don't show handicap spaces on this plan at this point as, either, but we don't have final, like I said, the final user and final number of units or, or hotel rooms that are going to be on here.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Any further questions from Planning Commission?
Mr. Luter, are you still proposing a public-private partnership to try to help with the public part of the infrastructure of this, and do you have any further details on that?
No, the, the only, the only public, potential public funding would be as it pertains to the, the farmer's market and, and the immediate parking around the farmer's market to service that. We are not seeking public money for the private components of this project.
Okay. One other question.
Can you expand upon anything that Smithfield Foods sees that this development helps them and explain that relationship of how they see this for something that helps them in their recruiting? Because I know we've had some, some, I don't know if I've seen the letters from the CEO, but there has been some letters floating around that he feels like this is something integral to his business.
I, I received, I received an email from the CEO of Smithfield Foods expressing his surprise and dissatisfaction that the project was not approved as we submitted. I, I shared that, shared that email with Mayor Bowman, and as I understand it, I believe that Smithfield has had communication with, with Mayor Bowman and, and Town Council. So, but I, I don't, I don't have any of those details other than what I'm sharing with you.
How do you think they'll utilize this, this property for their benefit in recruitment and retention of their executives and the people that they wish to attract to the Smithfield Foods part of this?
So what I can tell you with confidence is this, because we've, I've had multiple meetings with them going back three years ago. Again, the genesis of this project was to, to try to fill the void of what Smithfield Foods needs, and the hotel is a component of that. They, right now, right now, they have a number of meetings outside of the town of Smithfield that they would prefer to have in Smithfield because there's insufficient hotel rooms, there's insufficient meeting space or availability of meeting space. As it pertains to young professionals in particular, you know, they hire a lot of young professionals, and virtually none of those young professionals are living in Smithfield, Virginia. They, they want the type of apartment that we're proposing to build. They need the additional amenities that this project can offer, such as additional restaurants, additional retail, the, the open space. Those are the kind of things that these young professionals need. But really, it's, a lot of it has to do with the housing. And, and, you know, and the town of Smithfield is missing out on that opportunity. I mean, those people are, you know, they're, they're, they're well compensated, they have disposable income, they'll spend money in restaurants if they live here, they'll spend money... They'll spend money in restaurants if they live here, they'll spend money in the shops if they live here. And, and I believe that the town is missing out. I mean, and the biggest concern really, really is real in, in our mind. And again, it's, it's one of the driving factors of why, why we feel so strongly that this project is important is, you know, the, the mayor Franklin came and spoke about what happened when Union Camp left Franklin. Okay, if, you know, you all think about what happens if Smithfield Foods leaves the town of Smithfield. And I'm not suggesting that they're thinking about it, I don't want to mislead. But, you know, I believe that we all have a responsibility to do everything we can that's reasonable to give them the amenities that they need to want to stay here. And on top of that, Riverside Hospital has made it explicitly clear that they have over 200 people that are going to be working in that hospital. And those young professionals want the same type of apartments that we're proposing. And they want them to live in Smithfield. And if all these people live in Smithfield, think about the traffic we're talking about. There's going to be a lot, lot less traffic coming up and down the roads if they live in Smithfield. Because many of those young professionals, they're going to walk to work if they live in those apartments, or they're going to get on a bike. They're not going to be in a car. So, I mean, I just think it's extremely important that, you know, that you all listen to what Smithfield Foods needs that you believe is reasonable.
The short-term rental cottages, the five, how do you see those being utilized? Are the Airbnb come in for the weekend? Or are these a, more of somebody, you're recruiting me to Smithfield Foods and you're going to put me in a place for three or four weeks until I get my feet on the ground and figure out what I'm, what I'm doing?
I see it as a mix. I, I believe that, again, the young, the, the professionals that Smithfield brings to town, it's a place that they can stay for four, six, eight weeks. Also, on weekends, there's, you know, the town, the town has done a tremendous job with tourism. And, and look how vibrant downtown is today on Saturdays and the festivals that are here. Again, there's a shortage of, shortage of hotel rooms on, on select weekends. Those cottages fill that void. The ballparks, when they have baseball, out-of-town baseball events, those cottages are perfect for families to rent and stay in for the weekend.
One of the other concerns folks have had and expressed is the, I'm going to go to the single-family housing and duplex housing. There's concern that you're going to turn that over to another developer. How do we know they're going to live up to the quality that we expect of you and what your dad has done for the town? How do we see them, how do we see those single-family homes meeting that same expectation?
Well, you, you all are going to have to approve them. BHAR, BHAR has to approve these houses that are being built. And if we look at downtown today, you have a variety of houses in downtown. And, and, and what we envision having built is a variety of houses downtown. And, but BHAR has the ultimate say on approving that. And, you know, I will say, what, one other thing that hasn't changed that I failed to mention is that Weldon Field Row is not part of the new plan going forward. In large part because what we, what we proposed didn't get built. And, and, and they opted to pull out, they needed to pull out. So, you know, we, what, what I can tell you is that, you know, we will, we don't, you know, I can't tell you today who those builders will be on those lots, but what we do know is we're putting this into the historic district when we don't have to, especially those houses in the back. And, you know, and they're going to be subject to BHAR criteria.
Yeah, I mean, we get, say, on the outside, but there's a lot more that go into the quality of the building. You know, window choices, door choices, finishes that make a quality home, that make it more palatable.
But, but the lot, I understand, but the lots are going to be priced in such a manner that they're going to have to be quality houses. Otherwise, you know, people are not going to pay, pay what the price will be for the house, for the lots. And again, there's going to be a mix of size and cost. But, you know, it, it will warrant high-quality construction.
The, this doesn't factor in, obviously, because we're out of control of that. But I hope if, as a developer, if this gets ultimately approved for you, that you can use your influence to work on the Route 10 Mill Swamp interchange. Because there's going to be future development in the county that's going to come down Mill Swamp Road at some point in the future. It's just going to happen. And, and so this isn't a dead issue, it's just not, it's going to affect the town only in the sense of the traffic's coming through. But we as a town, and the county commission and the town council aren't going to have any say in those developments out in the county. And so those, because once we get past Mill Swamp Road, that's county. And then that's going to ultimately impact this Cary Street and everything else that goes on. So I hope you can continue, as you're developing, to use your influence with VDOT to, to see to, or help to, see if this is a legitimate request to get entrance and exit ramps off of there. Because in the future, we're going to see tons of development in the county further, further out. I think it's coming. It may not be here in the next decade, but it's going to be here in the next two decades.
Well, I can, I can assure you that, you know, that we will, you know, we will do what we can to ensure that the, that the charm and the viability of this town continues. And, and obviously, if you don't have, you know, if you don't have good traffic flow, then, then you can absolutely create problems.
Right.
So I, you know, I, Tom, I will, you know, we've already started the process and we will do what we can.
I understand. I mean, that's just, it's just a, I think, I think that would solve a lot of issues around town, not only for this development, but just traffic flow in general. And I think it would be hugely successful project, even though it's just one little piece of VDOT pie in the Hampton Roads area.
And I would say, I would say this, right now, Smithfield Foods employs about 450 in those corporate offices. And less than 10% of those people live in Smithfield.
Yeah.
So think about, think about if we can get those people to, to live in Smithfield and think what that does to traffic.
For me, I appreciate you getting rid of the fourth story because, you know, I've been adamant for that and didn't think that was appropriate. I know the citizens don't agree with me on this, but the changes are the changes, the traffic is where it is. I'm very worried about the perception of what Smithfield Foods might look at this as, as if we don't move forward. And how willing are we to work with Smithfield Foods on any projects that they may have? And the importance of what they have in our community. And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that relationship with them in this community with, however they see this project. I don't know. But for me, it's a little bit of a reduction. But I have to say that this is what I asked for from the beginning, and they, they proposed it, they've got it. And so I, at this point, I can't continue to object. That's my personal thoughts on this.
Any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Hearing none? Thank you, sir. Ms. Venable?
I would agree with Dr. Pope. They, they did what we asked them to do. I mean, we had really only the one objection to the variances that they requested, and they addressed that. Traffic's going to be an issue. We're growing. The town's growing, the county's growing. It's going to continue to be a problem for those of you that don't have a commute of over an hour every day. You really don't know what traffic is. So join me on a ride one morning if you'd like to. I leave it before 6:30. So I'll pick you up on the way, and you can see what traffic's really like. But it's coming to us, and we have to deal with it. I know this is just a discussion item for tonight, Ms. Clary. So what, what do you expect for us this evening? Just a warm, fuzzy, thanks for the changes, you know citizens still have issues?
I think Attorney Riddick has something to say about that.
Well, no, you, I mean, it was sent back to you for, by the town council for you to consider. At the time, it was sent back in its original form. The applicant has made a, a revision to his proposal. And you've considered that this is not a public hearing, you're not required to have one at this level. There will be one at the town council level, because Ms. Clary and I have conferred on that, and we think our ordinance requires that, and so there will be at the town council level. But there's no reasonable, well, unless you can come up with one, there's no reasonable need to carry it over. You can take action if you'd like to.
Meaning we should?
Vote tonight, right?
You may vote tonight if you want.
On each one of the S U Ps?
Yeah, and she can, Ms. Clary will do the same thing as she did before. She'll go through the, each of the items and do a roll call, vote on, as you did before. If you recall, you voted on each of the, they're not in the same order, I noticed that. Number, number three is, the old number three is the new number six. But still, they're the same things. They've, the S U Ps have been revised accordingly to reflect the new proposal as amended.
So?
I feel like there's citizen outcry for us to do more, to have another workshop, but I'm not sure what we're going to gain by that, by extending it any further at this point. We're not going to have community gardens on the site. We're just, we're not, that's not practical. You know, we're not going to have an Olympic pool for train, for the swim team, some of the other things that have been suggested. I think some concessions were made. I think this proposal has had a lot of give and take, and...
And this is probably like the fourth revision of it, and each one was a reduction of the previous.
Right. I understand people want, want what they want. And I think if, if nobody's really 100% happy, then maybe that's the best we can do. I don't know.
I think when we look at the, the value of Smithfield Foods to the town of Smithfield, I can tell you what happens when, when businesses pull out. Look at my small town. Then we look at the history of the developer and what they've done in the town of Smithfield and the quality of work that they've done. No one's, we're not going to make everyone happy. There was a comment made tonight is, is that I moved here two years ago, and I want to keep that same two-year feel that I have. I can imagine someone that's been here 10 years is going to say, I want to keep that same 10-year feeling that I moved here. I moved here about 15 years ago. So, changes is going to happen. I much rather it happen with someone that has history than someone that doesn't have history in Smithfield.
I moved here 30 years ago. It's, it feels a lot better than it did 30 years ago. So change is good.
Change is good.
You have a few more things now than you had then.
Yes, we do. We have a lot more things, and they're great.
I keep thinking about Walmart, when it proposed.
Maybe we don't need quite that much.
For Ben's Church.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm just saying.
Let's, let's draw a hard line there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that it was flawed, and I have no problem with that. But what happened was Walmart did an end around, and they put it right there at the end of James River Bridge. So they still have advantage of the tax revenue from this county that the county doesn't have access to.
And I still don't shop there, so.
Yeah, but a lot of people do crossing that bridge. But some things, I think, we do need. To maintain the, the economic vitality of the town, I think there are some things that we do need. Any further comments? Hearing none? We're going to go through special use permits.
Now, the first item is, is the rezoning.
The rezoning.
Conditional official zoning map amendment, that's...
Yes, we still have to do that.
That's the first item. I would, I recommend if you want to do this, you go in the order that Ms. Clary has him set out in her staff report.
Okay. So? This is...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we favorably recommend approval of the zoning map amendment.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion?
And that's, and that's as proposed with the proffered conditions.
That's exactly what I said. You blew my mind.
Your next second. I think Mr. Gibbs already did.
Yes.
Yes.
He can do it next time.
Oh, thank you.
Now he'll put you in next time.
So, we have a motion and a second. Considering this conditional official zoning map amendment rezoning as presented by the applicant with conditions from the town staff.
With proper, proper conditions.
With the proper condition, town staff. No further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is...
Upstate.
The motion is adopted. The second is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Future Land Use Map Amendment. As presented.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend favorable recommendation approval of the request for the cop plan amendment of the future land use map to town council.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Future Land Use Map as amended. And a second. No further discussion? Call for the vote.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's passed. It's approved. Now we have a first special use permit, multifamily residential dwellings. And... We understand this. I think we'll feature a maximum height of 39 feet for the three-story buildings.
Now you're, now you're at the...
This is the first special use permit, multifamily residential dwellings.
You're correct, 39-foot maximum height.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion? County commission discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Do I have to do them all?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, Chairman, I make a motion that the special use permit for the multifamily residential dwelling be approved with proffers.
Second.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's, it's a, he said that it'd be approved as a recommendation to the town council for approval.
Exactly what I said.
That's what I, I knew that. We're in sync.
You're hearing so well tonight.
As presented.
You're hearing his own point tonight, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Who's the second?
Me.
For first special use permit, multifamily residential dwelling. Be recommended. Town council as presented. Call for the vote?
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes. The motion to recommend the town council, the special use permit for multifamily residential dwellings is adopted. The second special use permit, waiver of maximum density.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I move we recommend the council favorable approval of the second special waiver of maximum density as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. For the special use permit, waiver of maximum density. No further discussion? No further discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passed. Motion is adopted. The third special use permit, waiver of parking and loading requirements. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we approve as presented.
Favorably recommend.
Yeah, favor, favorite recommend to, uh, town council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to favorably recommend the third special use permit, waiver of parking and loading requirements. No further discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to recommend the special use permit waiver of parking and loading requirements, town council has been adopted. Favorable recommendation has been adopted. The fourth special use permit, waiver of yard requirements.
I'll make the recommendation, favorable recommendation to the town council that we accept the fourth special use permit waiver of yard requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the fourth special use permit, waiver of yard requirements. Recommend for approval to town council as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote?
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes. Fourth special use permit, waiver of yard requirements. Motion to recommend favorably to town council has been adopted. Fifth special use permit, short-term rentals.
I'll make a motion to favorably recommend to the town council that we accept the fifth special use permit for short-term rentals.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Call for the vote?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes. Fifth special use permit, short-term rentals, recommended town council favorably as presented. That motion has been adopted. Sixth special use permit, waiver of maximum building height.
I'll make a recommendation, a favorable recommendation to the town council that we adopt the sixth special use permit for waiver of maximum building height.
Second.
We have a motion to recommend the sixth special use permit, waiver of maximum building height, and a second to town council. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Call for the vote?
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The sixth special use permit, waiver of maximum building height. The motion to recommend to town council favorably has been adopted. I believe that's the last item of this application. That's correct. Moving on to item number 11. This is a public hearing in regards to text amendment for recreational substances. Could we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, sir. Town staff was tasked with providing an update to the zoning ordinance to deal with recreational substances. What town staff is proposing is Article 13 for the definitions. That would be to exclude recreational substance establishments and retail sales establishments from the definition of a convenience store, and also to include recreational substance establishments from retail sales establishment de, uh, definition. We then created the recreational substance establishment definition, which is what you wanted to see from, I believe it was Chesterfield. The highlighted portions is what had, what town staff had added to that proposed, um, definition, and that would be removing zoning at the front, including proposed under item A, including item E, which addressed smoking or vaping on the premises. And then we also, um, took out some additional language for hemp, kratom, and the CBD. We would allow for a special use permit for recreational substance establishments. This would be in the downtown area, the highway retail commercial, the planned shopping center, the PMUD, light industrial, commercial industrial, and heavy industrial, and it would not be permitted in the residential office. We do recommend a robust discussion and a favorable recommendation to town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. This being a public hearing, no one signed up?
No, sir.
No one wish to speak in favor of, of opposition to this amendment? Seeing none? Public hearing portion of this application is closed. Planning Commission comments?
I have two comments. First one is, I thought we had discussed, well, at least for me, in my mind, um, we weren't gonna allow this downtown in historic area. So that was in there, or at least for me, I would like to see the downtown historic area removed, even with the special use permit, as it's not allowed in the historic area.
I thought we had included it because of the discussion with the cigar shops.
Yeah, but I thought, again, our definition is such that this is their primary business versus their secondary shelf space? Is that correct?
The discussion was about a cigar shop that, that this would be their primary business because they would be selling the tobacco products. So they would qualify as a recreational substance establishment.
But I thought that went back to our shelf space, 15% total shelf space. Like, if you look at Pearls, who may sell a cigar, they probably make up less than 0.2% of their shelf space according to what's in their store, but, so that really, that's not their primary focus, so that...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just try, I thought it was, we just don't want a vape store type establishment in the historic area.
The, because we, we qualify cigar shops and tobacco shops simultaneously with the vape, this would prevent a cigar establishment from opening up in the downtown area. And again, this would be a special use permit item, so they would have to come to planning commission and town council for approval. And so we could foresee a, a cigar-only shop, not a cigar vape shop, but a cigar-only shop that could potentially be viable in the downtown area.
That was the discussion. But if I say I'm gonna open up a cigar shop, and six months later, a year later, I decide to add some vaping stuff in there, what keeps you from being able for me to add that type of item into my shop? Or then all of a sudden, my cigar shop, and now I wanna sell men shirts and pants and shoes. You can't really stop me from that, per se, as I could another item, could you? I mean, I may bill it as such to get approval, but how does that evolve and change over time?
Town staff would make the rec, recommendation that this would be a cigar establishment, that they would be prohibited from selling any sort of additional vape-style products. We would ask that that be included in part of the conditional approval. If we were to get a proposed application for a cigar-type establishment in the downtown area.
So it would require a CUP anyway, right?
That is correct.
So if Emerson's wanted to come to town, a higher, which is a higher-end cigar shop in Norfolk, Michigan, if they wanna come to town and open on Main Street, they'd need a CUP. And if they wanted to evolve into vaping and just did it, they would be out of compliance, and we could revoke their CUP.
Correct. Then I'm okay with that.
How would we know that? Other than town staff going into the establishment to inspect?
Snitches.
We, we would hope that we would be notified.
I'll tell them.
Neighbors enforcing is the best, the best thing we have.
Okay, I, I just see it as opening up a can of worms down there, but...
Again, as part of the SUP, similar to what we did with the short-term rental, we could require the applicant to come back yearly to renew the special use permit and, and even then verify with the applicant that they're still operating under the conditions set forth.
I get the point, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I get the point that Dr. Pope is making. I mean, you know, I show you one hand and, and I do something else with the other. But I do think having them come back every year is a good idea.
All, all these are hypothetical examples.
Yeah.
So...
Just to verify.
If, if somebody were to come 10 years from now, when, if there's none of us on the same commission, that may be, not, this conversation may not be remembered. I don't have a problem with a cigar shop downtown. I absolutely have a problem with a vape shop downtown.
Yeah.
I think the SUP protects us from the vape shop downtown, which is what we're trying to get at. But I can go either way. I'm also not, it's also hypothetical that a cigar shop may want to come downtown. It just seems like someone that may fit our, our demographic downtown.
Nothing stops, for example, your wine shop from selling cigars right now.
Correct.
It's just a, it's, but it's not the primary focus of your business.
Correct.
Or somebody at Hamtown Market Dial or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or Wolf Hill.
Yeah.
Anybody.
But Mr. Hilligas is right that Emerson's, there's a difference between selling cigars in a shop and being a cigar shop. I mean, Emerson's is a shop.
Yeah.
And then my only other discussion item is, um, is there anything in this definition that covers future recreational substances that we don't know about yet?
That was my exact point. I didn't know what kratom was until a year ago. And, and they are forever, and, and Deputy G. Mark can probably, you know, they're very creative people. And, and the CBD changes, so there's, today it's CBD, and that's not allowed anymore, so tomorrow it's CBC, or whatever the case may be. They're very creative in what they do, so I would like to see something like that as well.
Well, how do you fashion that?
I don't know.
You prohibit something you don't know exists?
Attorney, Riddick.
I don't know how you do that. I think you just have to be vigil, vigilant.
You just have to revisit.
You have to be vigilant, and from time to time, do you, where something...
You have to revisit the link.
Potentially objectionable arises and becomes popular, you put it on the bad list.
Is there, there's no way to, to do a generalized statement about recreational substances? That are marijuana-like?
Yeah.
You know, people define recreational substances in a lot of different ways.
You can't paint this with a broad brush, no.
There's no hallucinogenics, there's no marijuana or derivatives of marijuana, or THZ, or, I mean, it'd be very difficult. It wouldn't be difficult, it'd just be...
Or LSD.
Yeah.
Well, the way things are going, it's all gonna be legal pretty soon, so.
But we don't have to let them sell it in town.
Just settling out to put it to bridge.
But there are safeguards here, though, correct? If I understand this, on Article 13, the definitions, and bullet number two, the resale sales establishment definition, at the end, it excludes some things, including recreational substance establishments. It's not, it's not defined as a retail. If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, if I understand this. For the purposes of ordinance, however, retail sales establishments shall not be interpreted to include recreational substance establishments.
Right, that means a vape store can't just claim they're a retail store. It doesn't work that way. They're defined as recreational substance establishment.
Right, which would have some safeguards where this would not be in a downtown.
Well, as a, as a primary establishment, yeah. In other words, if somebody wants to open a vape shop downstairs, downstairs, downtown, they can't, unless they get a special use permit, which is probably unlikely. But there's nothing to, as, as Mr. Pack is saying, what if they come up with some other version of a recreational substance that we can't foresee and don't know what it is as of this date? How do you define it? Well, if it becomes legal, there's nothing that stops it from being sold in, um, a convenience store, just like they're doing right now, because it's not the primary function of their business, so.
Would it be too vague to combine the three hemp and kratom and the CBD to state any product, including any raw materials, materials from hemp, kratom, CBD, or any other similar substance?
That's, why not?
Yeah. Yes.
Is, is alcohol a recreational substance?
They gotta move down the hall, because we, we can't, um, excuse me, Myra, we can't keep, we can't close the door, so they need to move down the hall.
In the way that we're defining it in our zoning ordinance, it is not.
Say that again?
For, if alcohol, um, would that be considered part of the similar substance?
Is it a recreational substance?
No, not the way it's defined.
No, I'm fine with the way it's written. I'm just, for me, I thought we were gonna say nothing downtown, but I'm just trying to figure out how do we make sure we don't get tobacco, mart, and vape in there.
Well, part of that, Dr. Pope, is good, is that we don't allow for any pipe, hookah, water pipe, vaporizer, which is a large part of their business. So at least you minimize part of it. We might have to amend this ornament as needed, which may be often.
I'm fine with that. I'm just...
I don't, I don't know how to...
Well, I mean, you, you, you took the first step by doing it tonight. I mean...
I think I'm okay with this house, President. Dr. Pope, if you wanna remove downtown from it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I mean, I'm not trying to, to do that. I just, when I read this, I thought, oh, downtown's in it. It's gotta go. That was my knee-jerk reaction.
So how do we wanna proceed?
I'm fine with the way it's written, as long as we've got some degree of say in the special use permit. Do we need to define the special use permit for these types of things, or for one year, renewable on a yearly basis or whatever?
I don't think you can, you, you shouldn't put that in the ordinance. That's something that you would do.
Right, you do it the time of the SUP.
Yeah, that'd be considered the title of the application of the special use permit. Did he open and close the public hearing? I can't recall.
He said seeing none.
Yeah, seeing none. Yes. Just, just making sure we follow procedure.
So we have, the public hearing has been opened and there were no speakers.
No speakers.
It's been closed.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this recreational substance.
Recommend.
A rec, uh, there's a recommendation for approval to Town Council?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I favorably recommend the recreational substance alternative retail sales with those zoning ordinance as presented.
With the staff recommended modification of, or any other similar substance?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, to approve the text amendment for recreational substances. As modified, staff ma, staff recommendations. No further discussion? Call for the vote.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hillgas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion has been adopted. Recommend Town Council favorable approval. Favorable recommendation, I'm sorry. Item number twelve, text amendment for dealers and pawn brokers, a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. This is to address the separation between potential dealers of precious metals and pawn brokers. This would be a special use permit item in highway retail commercial, planned shopping center district, planned mixed use district, light industrial and heavy industrial. And then we would be removing payday lending establishments, check cashing establishments, and pawn shops from our downtown and our residential office. We would then also be providing the following definitions in Article thirteen. That would be the definition of a precious metal deal, metals dealer, a secondhand dealer excluding precious metals dealer, and then a pawn broker. We would also be incorporating Virginia Code into Section twenty-six of Town Code with the additional requirement of the electronic reporting. We do recommend a robust discussion and a favorable recommendation to Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing? No one signed up? And no one wishes to speak in favor of, opposition to this amendment? Seeing none? Public hearing portion of this application is closed. Plan and commission comments?
Just for clarification. Dealers, pawn brokers, secondhand dealers, precious metal dealers, none of these are allowed by right anywhere in town, correct?
That is correct.
And they are excluded from residential office and downtown.
They would be.
They would be, they would be, yes. And then the other five indust, uh, industries would have to be by special use only, and you could put whatever you wish on that. Okay.
I have a question about definitions. Secondhand dealer. Tim, Pick on Pearls. She wishes to buy some estate jewelry and sell three or four rings in her store because she sees it as profitable. She not allowed to do that? Because she's a secondhand dealer, somebody who's not primarily focused, but she's buying precious metals that have already been pre-owned? So therefore she can't sell an estate jewelry?
So this would be anyone that would be interested in, that's not currently engaging in this behavior? We would then, when they came to us to apply for a new business, would enforce this secondhand dealer? But yes, if, if they're selling things that weren't previously owned or used by them and it's not the original source, then they would be considered a secondhand dealer?
All right, on that same note, I was in Asheville, no, St. Michael's, and they had a really cool store that did the same thing, but it's jewelry, it was furniture. But it was farmhouse style furniture, older stuff, you know, antiques. If they're on consignment, are they secondhand dealers?
They are, that's a problem.
I don't think that's an intention.
Because the entire mercantile mart would be considered a secondhand dealer.
That's right.
So we're gonna make everybody in the mercantile mart, mercantile mart, get a special use permit?
No, that's not, that's not our intention.
No, it shouldn't be.
But everybody in there is not a secondhand dealer. The mercantile overall umbrella, you could make the case as a secondhand dealer, but the individual vendors in there are individual retailers.
Because it's not, it's not just limited to, it says personal property, which is as broad as a barn. It's, it's everything.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking secondhand dealer is someone who's taken ownership. Whereas when we're looking at consignment.
It says.
Well, either way.
Buying, selling, exchanging, or dealing. If you're a consignment merchant, you're a, you're dealing in goods, they don't, you don't have title to them, but you're dealing in them, you're, you're selling them for others to make money.
Mercantile's not a consignment shop, though. They rent. Mini retail spaces.
But what are they doing? They're, they're selling items across.
They're landlord.
They're selling, I know that, but the, everybody in there would be, under this definition, would be considered a secondhand merchant, would they not?
Not at all.
Why?
The main, the main is not a secondhand merchant, they're not selling.
I don't, I haven't, so everybody who's selling antiques and things like that?
They're, that's not the majority of what's in there, though.
Okay, well, anybody, though. But anybody, I, I think, rather than looking at the entire mercantile, if you go in there and there's somebody selling antiques or, or, or anything that's on consignment, that would fall into this. And I don't think that's what our intention is, so we need to fix it so that that's.
But consignment does not necessarily equal pre-owned items. You've got crafters and artisans in there.
Maybe it doesn't have to be consignment, maybe it's.
There's like one antique booth in there, maybe, or there may be a mix of some, but most of them are crafters or retailers.
We do have antique stores downtown, right?
Yes.
Lauren Lucy's.
Wolf Hill.
So you're gonna call all those?
I, I, I'm concerned that is. I wanna make sure that we write this so it doesn't, that.
Right, I don't want that either.
Yeah.
Because Wolf Hill doesn't sell entirely, they, they have vintage goods, they're not new manufactured.
But they have brand new stuff, too, and they have stuff that's made to the gold as well.
I understand that, but are we gonna call them, are we gonna call them a secondhand dealer?
No, I would call them an antique store.
Why, why do we need a secondhand dealer definition to start off with?
So we were thinking of like a GameStop where you would trade in or buy old video games. We were trying to distinguish that use of a, of an establishment from a precious meta, metals dealer and a pawn shop.
The problem is it's previously owned, used, but not from the original source.
To what, but what's the end game? I mean, what's, what's the real point?
Well, that's, that's kind of what the question is right now, is.
Is it because you don't want pawn shops? I mean, I'm sorry, I missed the discussion last meeting.
Pawn shops are a different issue, that's completely different, because that's a.
That, that's defined below.
They're defined. But let's take pawn shops and precious metal dealers out of the equation, and you start talking about, under this definition, any person who engages in the buying, selling, exchanging, dealing in personal property, which is everything, which has been previously owned or used, but not from the original source. That means every antique shop. Who's, who you said Pearls perhaps? I don't know what she, you know, she's got.
Most of her stuff is new.
Probably most of her stuff is new, but.
Uh, but the, um.
Drift shops, DABs.
Wolf Hill, the thrift shop domain in the old Stevenson Realty Building.
Isn't correct.
Vintage place right beside modeling printing.
Correct.
Yeah, the old, um, no, I guess that's the same place, it must have been White's jewelry store on Main Street.
So my point is, I don't think you wanna paint this with such a broad brush that you make all these people who are lawfully selling their goods right now with no objection and problem.
Suddenly be out of compliance.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that makes much sense.
We can remove the secondhand dealer definition.
I think that's a good idea. Because it's too broad of a definition. And like Dr. Pope, like Mr. Pack said, you shut down used car dealership as well.
You're right.
Not that we want to use car dealership downtown, but I mean, Garrett Torrell is building this cool little car museum, maybe he wants to sell a car or two, and that would not permit him to do it. Definitely not what we're trying to get at.
Well, you shouldn't fashion a revenue against a problem you don't have.
Right.
Well, I mean, I went to jewelry store looking for a Christmas gift, and they had all the estate section, which is all previously used, so even though that's probably, that's not their primary business, but there's a market to make money on that. So my question is, is, again, if I want to be a dealer, but I'm not manipulating gems and precious metals on site, but yet I call myself a secondhand dealer so I can open a store down there? I don't, I'm try, I can't get my mind wrapped around the secondhand dealer. Why wouldn't, if Pearls thought that was appropriate, she went to a, to a store and bought five or six pieces of jewelry and said, hey, this is something I can turn around in my store and make fifty bucks off of pretty quickly. You know, that makes her a secondhand dealer. I don't think we want to limit her either. But what keeps people from just doing that is, hey, this is, I've got a store, I've got a retail outlet, this makes it easy turnaround.
All right, so what do you want to do about a GameStop type store? Because we don't want to exclude what, what might happen to Pearls. But to Ms. Clary's example, I don't think we want to really see a GameStop downtown.
Why would you think they would even want to be downtown? Why wouldn't that go in a strip mall?
Like Smithfield Plaza or something.
Yeah, that, it's just.
I understand your point. We're, we're trying to solve a problem that perhaps doesn't exist.
Yep.
But I wish we'd thought about vape shops. Before it became a problem, we had to fix.
Thought to ban them, you mean?
Yeah.
So what, do we want to remove secondhand dealer?
I just think there are too many unintended consequences by having that phrase in there.
Then we want to remove it?
I think probably so. Because I don't know how to go about fixing it.
Yeah. It's problematic, because if you read the definition of it, you, you paint lots of people who are lawfully doing business in the town with no problems as a secondhand dealer.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you really want to do that.
Probably half, half the people on Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think we want to be anti-business, discourage business.
Ms. Clary, was that a robust discussion?
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion?
Only other last thing is, it says precious metals as any items except coins composed of whole, gold, silver, platinum, platinum alloy, alloys, or other precious metals. Because right now, they may be precious right now, but something else may be precious as well, but. So there may be other types of metals that may be precious.
That maybe go with Randy's recreational drugs that don't exist yet?
Yeah.
It's a living document, people, we just think that's.
Are you saying, Dr. Pope, there's something that we haven't discovered yet?
Not that we haven't discovered, but a new purpose for a new metal.
Okay.
That may make it worthwhile. Smithsonian had a very intriguing exhibit on cell phones and how much rare precious metals go into a cellphone, and how many milligrams of precious metals it takes to create your cellphone.
Or their cars are moving that way as well.
Yeah.
So right now, gold, silver, platinum may trade for money, but there may be a market in other precious metals in the future that have nothing to do with gold, silver, or platinum.
Well, it sounds like you're prepared to make the motion, Dr. Pope.
I'd like to remove this, I would make a motion that we, well, for me, I would say add other precious metals behind platinum alloys, but for me, and then I would like to remove the secondhand dealer. Paragraph.
Second.
And make a favorable recommendation to Town Council?
To accept those changes, those two changes. Yes, make a favorable recommendation to Town Council with removing paragraph of the secondhand dealer, adding precious metals to the end of the dealer statement. And present it to them as a favorable recommendation with those changes.
Second.
Can you clarify where we're adding in the definition of dealer?
Behind, say that again?
Behind platinum alloys.
Behind platinum alloys.
At the very end?
So we're expanding the exclusion? Because the precious metals is any items except coins composed in whole or in part of gold, silver, platinum, or platinum alloys?
Well, there are, but there are gonna be other, so gold, silver, platinum are elements. There are gonna be other elements that may be considered precious.
But it says any item, except coins composed in whole or in part of gold, silver, platinum, platinum alloys.
And that definition comes straight from Virginia Code.
Talking about the composition of the coins, not.
Yeah, it's not.
Not the list of precious metals.
You're making an exception for coins, so if you remove it, any precious metal means any item composed in whole or part of gold, silver, platinum, or platinum alloys, except for coins. You're allowing it in coins.
Coins composed of. So the coin would have to be composed of gold, silver, platinum, or platinum alloys or cellphone stuff. Precious metals. That'd be a coin.
This is why I don't go to law school.
You're close.
Let, W. Chief Mars, you have anything to add, particularly concerning the dealers?
His, his point is, we'll take it, he probably needs to stick with the state's definition or code definition of.
Okay, we can stick with that. So I'd like to revise my motion that we, we make a favorable recommendation to Town Council with removal of the secondhand dealer paragraph.
Second.
Okay. Anything you'd like to ask, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. I mean, you've been sitting here all evening. Thought you might want to.
Thought he was paying attention.
Yeah. Okay. No further discussion, we have a second, and we have a motion to accept the text amendment with, and removing, with the condition of removing the definition of secondhand, I mean, second, what is it, dealer?
Secondhand dealer.
Secondhand dealer. To make a favorable recommend, uh, recommendation to Town Council. We have a motion and a second. With the condition, staff report of staff, and with the removal of the definition of the secondhand dealer. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hillgas?
Yes.
Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is adopted. Item number thirteen. The approval of the Tuesday, September twelfth.
We've got, we've got one more item, late item, Mr. Pope.
Oh, that one.
Six fifty five West Main Street.
Yes, the one that was added, I'm sorry.
And I can blow through this and give you the quick version.
Okay, because I, yeah, I looked at that and, oh, that's in the other one, that's in, no, that's a separate page, okay.
That's your third tab.
Yeah.
Yes, let's give you a quick version.
I'll give you the quick version.
Yes.
Okay, the town, because the Lakeside Heights floods, we were looking for a, an, a alternate, essentially an escape route, alternate exit, ingress, egress from Lakeside. And so we purchased a lot at the end of Quail Street, and then we made a deal with Brian's AME Zion, and they've given us an easement, a permanent easement, that goes from the town's lot at the back of Lakeside on this plant, it goes out to Main Street. And part of the deal, as consideration for this easement, the town agreed to pave this driveway. And it's a pretty good deal, because we needed to, we needed an all-weather surface anyhow. And so the church gets a nice parking lot, the town gets emergency exit in and out of Lakeside Heights, and everybody's a winner. And so this is just an approval of an amended site plan, is that right, Ms. Clary?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And, and when you say Lakeside, are you talking about the houses on Quail Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
They only have one entrance and exit that often floods in heavy rains.
Right.
So this would give, if the residents don't want to leave, but there was a medical emergency, it also gives access to our E M T to get to when it's flooded.
I was looking at the map, and I was a little confused about, how does this really connect to Quail Street?
We own, the town owns that lot, C Lot nineteen, on your, on the plat.
Yeah, I, I drove through there.
We don't have site plans yet for the second half. That's gonna go across town property, um, but it is proposed. Across Lot nineteen and will connect to Quail Street with a concrete apron.
So is, is there a, a, a structure on Lot nineteen?
No.
It is not?
Making lot.
Okay.
That's how we get from Quail Street to the Bryan's A M E Church property.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a road, and there'll be a gate, most likely with a key, that the police department will have. I think that's probably what we're talking about, because we don't want this to be a thoroughfare where people come and go all the time.
Correct.
It's just gonna be for emergency purposes. If there's a flood. Deputy Chief Meyer will go down there with his key and unlock the gate, and people will know that they can come and go.
Okay.
We build neighborhoods with two entrances and exits.
That's right.
Uh-huh. But there has to be some modification to the curves and such on Quail Street.
Yeah, but that's.
That's later.
We're not there yet.
Okay, that's later. Okay.
All right.
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve as presented and a second. No further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
Chairman Bryan?
Yes. Motion has been adopted. And.
Last but not least.
Last but not least, uh, I'm, I'm guessing this is number fourteen.
Yes, it is.
Approval of Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
I recommend they be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor of? Say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. No? Hearing none. Minutes have been approved.
Move for adjournment.
That is the last item on our agenda tonight, unless someone wants to discuss some new business?
That's not debatable.
Oh, business? No one wants to discuss any?
So, yeah, let me, let me put this out. So the proposals that we sent to Sweetgrass, uh, they were presented at the, at the plan and commission in the town. And, uh, we went over each one individually, and his statement was, he was happy with what he had submitted. And I gave him the opportunity to say, well, you know, changes, I'm happy with what I submitted, what we've submitted.
Y'all haven't voted yet.
When you say he, you mean applicant?
The developer, yes.
The developer. Okay, I'm gonna leave that one on. I'm gonna leave that one alone. This meeting is adjourned.